All right, welcome to the June 13th, 2023, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Next, individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and then individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. Next, citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must sign up card and identify the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to a total of three minutes on the entire consent agenda. And then finally, all sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much. Council, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meetings on March 28th, April 25th, 5:30, April 25th, 6:30, May 9th, and May 23rd, 5:30. Special council meeting on May 31st. And hold on one second, and we also had a correction to those minutes. I don't think everybody got that.
And that was minutes for March 28th.
Then that was minutes for March 28th, correction. Thank you. I need a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. City Manager.
Onto special recognition and presentations. Fire Battalion Chief Adam Valkenon will present a Green Belt project that he completed this year. The focus of his project was the turnaround times on fire equipment apparatus repair, maintenance, and assessing the compound effects of delays in enacting changes to increase efficiencies. And you recall with the Lean Six Sigma projects, we have brought some back before council, but during the COVID, we kind of stopped doing that. So this is one of the ones that we are very proud of, and Adam, the floor is yours.
Take your choice, really and truly, whichever way you want to go.
I'm a stander. All right. Good evening. Thank you. Ms. Larie said, Adam Valkenon, Battalion Chief with Titusville Fire Department. I want to stop by thanking our city leadership for having me here to present this today, to our department leadership, to their support for this project, our combat personnel for their continued feedback, and a special thank you to my Lean Six team, firefighter Kyle George and Mila Ramos, who made it today, who not only brought this project to life, but have been the driving force behind the success day after day. The title of my Lean Six project is optimizing apparatus repair. The goal of this project was to reduce the repair ticket lead time by at least 50%. As a brief background to this project, when I first stepped into the battalion chief role a few years ago, one of my responsibilities was the continued care and maintenance of our apparatus, which was an exciting challenge for me because as a firefighter, driver, and even lieutenant throughout my career, I was a phenomenal armchair quarterback about why our apparatus was always in the shop, never getting fixed. Something was always broke, that kind of, that kind of quarterback. So of course, I was going to move mountains and make it flow smoothly overnight when I started this project. Didn't quite happen that way, kind of humbled by the process, but. All right. So each shift, when we check out our apparatus, we have a detailed checkoff list customized for that apparatus with everything from fluid levels, tire tread depth, to lights, sirens, pump operations, equipment, and everything in between. The driver assigned to that apparatus for the day is to complete this bumper-to-bumper checkout in its entirety. And whenever an issue is discovered with an apparatus, the driver then marks off the issue, generates a ticket, and subsequently sends out an email notifying me of the issue. From this point, I would coordinate with the city garage to have the vehicle drive over to be diagnosed and figure out if it was a quick fix, or if crews had to swap out into a reserve apparatus and leave their main line there for repairs. Now, while this made sense for your more significant mechanical issues, it seemed pretty superfluous for a light bulb change or windshield wiper replacement, especially considering the amount of time out of service that they, you know, would have out of their first due run area for something so minor. I had kind of scattered out where those stations were at, and the little tool envelope there is where the garage is at, so you see where they have to go. Taking into account drive time to the garage, downtime for the apparatus or the apparatus exchange, and then drive time back to the station, the apparatus could easily be limited or delayed out of their area for in excess of an hour or longer, which in turn results in coverage deficiencies. A good example of that, so we'll say Engine 12, which is the shaded orange area there. If they're out of, have a headlight needs to be replaced, and they go out of their area to get to the garage to get it done, now that orange area is out coverage of a fire suppression apparatus for however long it takes them to drive down there, get it replaced, and come back out. Tickets were continuing to pile up, as well as the amount of time that tickets were remaining unresolved because other apparatus or repairs were taking priority. At the time of my final presentation, there were 83 total tickets that were outstanding, with time in the queue ranging from about 20 days to 400 days. I kept thinking that there had to be a better way. This is entirely too long. After meeting with the garage and getting a better understanding of where the bottlenecks were occurring, I was able to get a better idea of where we can make these changes. This project is unique in that I was attempting to address and streamline issues that are not actually part of my department that I do not directly oversee or have any direct control over, but impacts my department on a daily basis. Truly, it was the direction given by Ms. Larie during the gate review that's really spearheaded this. He informed me on the way to military tiers their repairs, and it was a great model for us to mirror. It just, it made sense. This was going to be a bit of a cultural shift from the way that we've always done it, which came with its own set of challenges, stepping out of comfort level for all involved. After some coordination with our designated and highly mechanically inclined fire department personnel, along with fleet, we successfully divided our pairs into three different tiers, similar to the military model we talked about. Tier one would be your minor repairs that the fire department approved personnel could make, such as light bulbs, windshield wipers, equipment mounting, things of those nature. Tier two would be significant repairs done by the city garage, such as brakes, steering suspension, hydraulic lines, and so on. Tier three would be your specialized repairs done by outsourcing, such as major engine overhauls, pump tank repairs, sensors, or other repairs required by outside vendors. Our success was measured via the amount of tickets listed that are resolved, as well as a turnaround time for each. Of the 83 tickets at the time, 35 of the 83, or 42% of them, were categorized under tier one repairs. This is a scatter plot chart of the active tier one tickets back in October of 2022, as well as the day each ticket was active. This is that wide range I was saying, between 20 days and 400 days. I'll come back to this, and it'll make a little more sense. Following the final presentation of Lean Six Project, our approved fire department personnel began coordinated efforts toward accomplishing the goal statement of reducing the repair ticket lead time by at least 50% for tier one repairs, reducing that scatter plot chart we just saw, basically making all the little dots go away. So within days of implementation, we already began to see improvements on issues getting addressed and resolved quickly. The successful reports and resolved tickets continued almost daily. One such report was our reserve ambulance that was running as a main line for the day out of Station 11, it's our little green shaded area there, and had multiple rivets in need of replacement throughout the various compartment doors. This tedious task would have occupied hours of time from a mechanic who could have otherwise been working on more significant repairs and overhauls of other vehicles, or some of our other vehicles. Instead, this was done on shift by our approved personnel, who happened to be assigned to that apparatus for the day, who was able to keep the unit in service by chipping away at it throughout the shift between calls. The result was over 200 rivets replaced without the unit ever having to leave their primary run area or be taken out of service. Another instance was an emergency light on Engine 13, our suppression apparatus that covers the pink shaded area in the south. Rather than have to make the trip to the garage and limit a suppression apparatus, our personnel was able to pull the part number and order the light while it was in the station, and once the light came in, was able to replace it, all while it remained in service in the station, keeping suppression coverage in the south end. Most recently and possibly the greatest demonstration of success and efficiency was when our EVT mechanic, the main mechanic that works on our apparatus, was out for an extended period of time. While he was out, the pressure governor displays on Engine 12 and Engine 13 both went out. By working directly with the tier three contractor at 10-8 over in Sanford, firefighter George was able to remove the broken governors and secure loner pressure governors to replace them to keep the trucks in service while the broken parts were shipped off to California for repairs. Then, once repaired, they were shipped back to turn, he was able to swap them out, swap out the repaired ones with the loner ones. All of this was done without the apparatus ever having to leave the station, resulting in no interruption of coverage for our citizens. Now, while they're unauthorized to perform the tier two repairs, our approved personnel is able to diagnose several tier two repairs and have the parts ordered and at the garage for when the EVT mechanic returned to work, so he would have everything ready and could get right into making the repairs. It was just exceptional efficiency. So the plan was to give a progress report at the six-month mark, or once we accomplish our goal statement, whichever came first. I'm delighted to say that due to the extraordinary efforts put forth, we had achieved our goal in just over four months. This is the side-by-side comparison of the work in progress from my final presentation in October 2022 to February 2023. Notice that not only has the average number of active tier one tickets dropped by 60%, going from 35 to 13, but the average lead time of these 13 tickets had dropped 60% as well, going from 136 days to 56 days. Lot of little dots went away. Furthermore, I'm proud to report that after running the numbers again a couple weeks ago in preparation for this presentation, from February 2023 to May of 2023, the average number of active tier one tickets had dropped another 8% to 12, and the average lead time of these 12 remaining tickets was down an additional 30% to a 39-day average. Little asterisk over here. I would like to point out that this does not include all of the new tickets that popped up along the way and were resolved on the fly while simultaneously tackling the longstanding tickets that were there. Very proud of the work being done and cannot begin to emphasize the value this multi-tiered fleet maintenance program has shown thus far. This is our current apparatus lineup. However, we are rapidly growing as a city and are anticipating substantial growth over the next five to 10 years, as you're well aware. As a result, our department is going to continue to expand, which will result in more apparatus being added to our fleet, which we're incredibly grateful for and have already begun to see with the plans for Station 14 in full effect. If all goes as planned, this is our potential five-year apparatus lineup. Notice the increase in additional fire suppression apparatus, squad units, and heavy rescue apparatus. Looking into a 10-year plan, our department has the potential to nearly double in size of stations, personnel, and of course, apparatus. Ambitious, I know, but wonderful, right? Our objective is to work out the kinks now and create a better streamlined process early on so we'll be able to take on these additional apparatus as they come with a smoother transition and limited delays because it's not going to get any easier to keep up. We will continue to reevaluate and fine-tune this process as we are very committed to the continued development of this program and remain receptive to any and all solutions to make improvements that benefit both departments and ultimately the city and its citizens as a whole. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Well, Adam, thank you so very, very much. My hat's off to all of you for taking this on and becoming oh-so-much more efficient, which makes us so much more effective. Looking, I don't know what slide number this is, but it's the one where lead time's down 60%, 56-day average. Active tickets down 60%. That's from October to February. That is amazing. And again, the biggest thing is you're, you know, you've got your equipment on the road. You are able to respond. I know that wasn't the major part of the presentation, but I love like Slide 10 that shows the bubbles of coverage. That really is a really good visual for us to see who's covering what. And when you don't have the vehicles on operation, it makes it very tough. So congratulations. Well done, and thank you.
Thank you.
Member Nelson.
I just want to say I'm very impressed. That was great.
Thank you.
And the tier one, two, and three borrowing from the military, that was a great idea. So I'm very impressed.
Fantastic. Yeah, they've been doing a great job getting this taken care of for us.
That's awesome. It just really is. The efficiency is beyond words, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I get what they said. I understand the military system, being a retired engineer. The part that I congratulate you on is that we have a lot more manpower to get this accomplished than you have within the city, and to be able to do it and maximize your effort with the amount of manpower that you have is a Bravo Zulu, a job-well-done type of activity, okay? You know, that's very, very good. To implement a program like that with your manpower, that says a lot about the determination of all of the people that you work with and the leadership that you have shown in this process.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, identifying the problem and then coming up with the problem solving is very impressive. So again, thank you very much. Anybody else on council? Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much.
That's awesome.
Appreciate it.
Well done. Very well done. Proud of you guys. That's awesome. City Manager.
Onto item 5B, Senate Bill 102, the Live Local Act, was passed by the legislation and signed by the governor this year. It becomes effective on 1 July 2023. Mr. Parrish will provide council a presentation on the Live Local Act, and no action is required on your.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Good to see you there again. Let me get the other PowerPoint.
So as already mentioned, this law was approved earlier this year, and it's a pretty lengthy document. It's about 100 pages. It's in your packet. And I did give you a summary that was provided to us by the Affordable Housing Coalition, but I'm just going to go through and just hit the highlights that primarily affect the city of Titusville in our presentation. Just to start off, though, the governor signed this earlier this year. I'm going to skip around. So it becomes effective on July 1st. It sunsets 10 years later, in October 1st of 2033. It does not require us to update or amend our code to address this new law. The first major thing that came about out of this law was a huge influx in monies from the state into affordable housing programs, existing affordable housing programs. So for example, the Sadowski Act was a fund that was created many decades or many years ago, and it had, it's always rated. Well, now they've filled it and they've doubled it. So it's almost $300 million-plus dollars in affordable housing program monies available in the state for a variety of projects that include multifamily developments and probably some other types of developments and mixed-use developments that include affordable housing. The Live Local Act, as it's known, Senate Bill 102, includes funding for tax credits, tax incentives, includes provisions there about land use tools and the role of local government, how publicly owned land should be inventoried and disposed of and a process for that, and also includes a state housing strategy. The law preempts local governments from enacting ordinances controlling the price of rent under any circumstances. It removes the city's ability to approve affordable housing and residential parcels by bypassing state and local laws that may otherwise preclude such development. It also removes the floating housing finance corporations restrictions to utilize approval processes on commercial and industrial parcels. I'll address that in a moment, what that means to us. Section 166.04, 151, paragraph 6, states, "The city may approve housing in mixed-use, commercial, and industrial zoning if at least 10% of the residential units in the project are affordable." The next paragraph states, "The city must approve a multifamily and mixed-use residential development if at least 40% of the residential uses are affordable for at least 30 years, and this can be in a commercial and industrial zoning property. We cannot require approval through a land use or zoning change, a conditional use permit, a variance, comprehensive plan amendment, and it exempts height, it has some exemptions here, or preemptions for height, zoning, and density." So the zoning is specific to allowing it to, in a commercial zoning district or an industrial zoning district, does not require rezoning. And it does have some preemptions for height and densities, which I'll describe in a moment. Density on this kind of development cannot be restricted to below the highest allowed density, residential density in the city. So currently, the max, the highest density per acre that we have in the city is in the downtown mixed use, and that's currently at 30 units per acre. As far as height, it cannot be restricted below the currently allowed commercial or residential development within one mile or three acres, three stories, rather, whichever is higher. If you recall, several years ago, the city approved what's called a height overlay ordinance, and that has a maximum height of 75 feet. And so several, and we also have, we do not have a maximum height in some of our commercial zoning districts. But for example, in the community commercial zoning district, it does have a requirement that a development or building be further set back from a property line the higher it goes over a certain threshold, but not to a particular maximum. So as far as the height overlay ordinance, you see in this map here, the ordinance identified several areas where you can utilize this 75-foot-high structure, and in some cases, along the water, you can actually go up to 150 feet if you adhere to certain criteria, such as a mixed-use development. We've included, using our JS staff, they were able to create this map here that showed within a mile of those areas identified by that overlay, you would, a mixed-use development that would be, that met the criteria of this new law, would be able to go up to 75 feet. Yes, sir?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
As far as the community commercial zoning district, for example, on the next slide here, you'll see we have several properties throughout the city that have that height, that have that zoning, and therefore that unlimited height as long as you meet additional setbacks. So you looked at the entire city as a potential area where property could go up to an unlimited height depending, as long as it meets those other standards, those other setback requirements. One of the incentives, some of the incentives that the law states that we should consider for an affordable housing project is to reduce, for reduced parking requirements must be considered if development is located within one-half mile of an accessible transit stop. We should consider waiver fees, except building permit fees may be considered. All of the state, the law does state that all other local standards still apply, such as setbacks in a zoning district. The maximum purview surface and lot coverage, that doesn't affect our area of critical concern area, where we have a maximum purview surface areas for our welfare areas. There, we can still apply a minimum floor area per unit, our concurrency regulations, and that has to do with making sure there's enough capacity on our existing roadways surrounding a development, where do we have enough capacity to provide water and so on. And then also that we, that have to adhere to all other comprehensive plan policies, policies except height, density, and those zoning requirements, such as commercial industrial zoning districts. Some policy considerations, the policies to, we should come up with some policies to expedite the review and approval of review of, and have those review and approval processes on the city's website. The city has already approved, as part of its ship incentive program, a policy to allow an applicant to submit a request to do an expedited review of an affordable housing project. So we currently have that in place, but now we have to have this procedure, or revisions to this procedure on our website. Counties and cities must produce their real property inventory list by October 1st of this year and update it every three years, and make the listing available on the city's website. We're currently doing that right now. Neighborhood Services is working on this list, and this list is supposed to include not just city-owned property, but also any other special district-owned property as well on that list. And then we're supposed to identify which properties would be most appropriate for affordable housing. There is a local option, affordable housing exemption program in the law. It does allow, state that, it provides that the governing body of a county or city may adopt by ordinance an ad valorem tax exemption for certain property used for providing affordable housing. So what I've learned from some webinars and other lectures that I've heard on this particular law is that this could be a tool that local jurisdictions could adopt to help incentivize and direct affordable housing projects in certain areas of the city. So we could identify certain areas of the city that would be appropriate for this particular exemption if we want to adopt that kind of ordinance and allow property owner or developer to utilize that exemption if they propose their project in certain areas of the city. The property must be utilized to house extremely low or very low income limits, and the definition of statute for that is 30% area median income or 50% area median income. The project must have a minimum of 50 residential units and meet rent limitations, and must not have any code enforcement citations within the past. and must not have any code enforcement citations within the past preceding two years. Governments encourage, are encouraged to adopt best practices in creating surplus land programs. So we're supposed to come up with criteria for the receipt or purchase of surplus land. Draft procedures and for applicants or property owners to request surplus land publicly available so that they can develop on those properties. Ensuring long-term affordability through ground leases by retaining a right of first refusal to purchase property that would otherwise be sold or offered at market value. There are some outstanding questions that we have after reading the new law. We're going to assume that we'll utilize the minimum unit size stated in the R3. That's the multifamily zoning district that allows 15 units per acre right now. It does have a minimum living unit sizes in there. And so if a project is proposed to us in a commercial zoning district or an industrial zoning district, that's something we would ask to see maybe that should be, those standards should be utilized. We have some questions as to how density would be calculated in wetlands and density would be calculated in floodplains on commercially zoned or industrially zoned property. There are some next steps. We are going to continue working on this property disposition list and the procedures and having that posted on our city's website. We believe that maybe the city council should consider this ad valorem tax exemption program and to help us identify key areas where affordable housing would be most appropriate. And to define what is mixed use and clarify the unit sizes and densities in wetlands and floodplains. So on Thursday afternoon at 2:00 PM, the Florida Housing Coalition will have a webinar. I believe we distributed this information out to you. And many members of our staff are going to be watching this. They'll be giving a webinar and instruction on about the land use aspect of this new law. With that, I'll try and answer any questions you have.
That webinar is tomorrow? Thursday?
Thursday at 2:00 PM.
I thought I heard Wednesday. My bad. See if anybody else has anything first, and then I've got a couple of questions. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Brad, thank you. I, as I perused this and read through it, the state, I, just my assumption and guide me if I'm wrong, the state has taken, has taken away some of the ability of a local city or municipality to control how they're going to look in the future because of affordable housing issues. Would you say that?
They have preempted local jurisdictions from denying an affordable housing project, provided they meet the criteria of the law.
Yeah. Yeah, so in the, out in the future to meet the needs of affordable housing, we will look different because we'll have buildings or multifamily units in places where they're going to look quite out of place from what the city used to look like. And that's happening all over to meet the needs and, and as I examine this and with the tax credit and everything that will be offered to incentivize developers to come in, it's going, it's going to change the way that we look. And it is, it is incumbent upon the city management and the governors of the city on how we go forward in controlling that effort. Because as we determine what our criteria it will be locally, we're going to have to keep that in mind because if they meet all of the criterias that the state places upon us, they can pop up basically anywhere as long as they, they meet all of the requirements and not in violation of anything to meet the needs that, and the need is going to continue to, to grow to, for individuals in all types of conditions, meeting that 30% or that 50% below area median income. So as you and staff look, go through and see where it's going to be the best place to locate some of these possible multifamily units is, it is, it's going to be a challenge. And to keep our city relatively looking as it looks today. It's, it's going to be tough because we're, we're basically being mandated or given the the go-ahead to do it and you will do it and make it happen. So it's, it's going to be some fights. It's going to be a lot of local residents, longtime residents complaining about certain things. And we don't have that much land available to meet the needs in areas where they will, affordable housing will be more acceptable to some of, some of our citizens than in others. So we're going to, as you're putting this together, it is, and I want the citizen of the City of Titusville to know is that they can, they can be placed building four-foot, three-story, four-story building to meet the needs of these individuals and families as we go forward. And it will pop up in places that is going to be a little bit shocking and maybe annoying to a lot of, a lot of us. And then, and I'm not, as a, as a 33-year resident of Titusville, you know, it's going to pop up in my, in areas that I will be surprised and say, wow, we've gotten to that point. So if we can get ahead of designating certain areas that, as you, to use your phrase, that are more suitable to this type of residence, I think it will be better able to control how our city remains to look and to still be that beautiful Titusville. But we're going to have to do, staff and we'll have to do a lot of work to get a lot of land that we don't have available to, to house affordable housing units. I guess I made that, I said that it's going to look different in the future. And I hope I said it that we can all grow together and accept what is inevitable as we go forward to meet the needs of citizens of Titusville.
Ultimately, I think what, part of what Vice Mayor is saying and the thing that stands out to me is that the local municipalities, specifically here at this council, we are going to, on July 1st, lose a lot of the decision-making to the state. And Brad, I'm going to kind of ask you that because it seems as though when it comes to affordable housing and when we're talking about designating certain areas, I could be wrong, but it seems as though if the developer comes in and has an area he wants to go to, our, our decision-making on land use is very limited. The state has pretty much stated that. Am I, am I close?
So with, what the, yeah, the state is preempting local jurisdictions.
So right there in a nutshell, the state has preempted local jurisdiction when it comes to affordable housing?
On, on approving it under certain circumstances. So denying a affordable housing project based on a height that is, because it's not consistent with the height, but yet it's allowed within a mile based on zoning regulation, that's something we can't deny. We can't use as a basis for denial. So that's what it's preempting, for example. The, but it had, you know, like any project, it has to adhere to other regulations such as setbacks, concurrency. So if the project is commercial for, the zoning is commercial and the project's going in and it meets a certain number of residential units, a certain threshold or percentage of it is going to be affordable housing and meets other criteria of the law, we'd have to approve it, but then we can still apply other land development regulations to it. And still has to meet our concurrency requirements. We still have to be able to provide services to it. If it doesn't meet those requirements, then it's not something you can go forward. So what the law is really doing is it's preventing local jurisdictions from utilizing height and density as a means of denying a project under certain circumstances.
And when we go land use, a lot of times it's based on how something fits in someplace. For example, if you're in a place that has one-story homes and, you know, they're a certain amount of acres, et cetera, then all of a sudden, land use based on state's mandate is, it can be different now. It doesn't have to match up if it's affordable housing. It can be three stories. And perhaps we might have said in the past, well, like land use, that doesn't really fit what's there. That's going to be different starting July 1st when it comes to affordable housing, at least much looser.
Right. So we'll need to consider if, you know, how we want to address this. What I learned at the webinar with the Florida Housing Coalition was that local jurisdictions, and one example they gave us was Manatee County, where they're looking at their commercial quarters to see if that's an appropriate location for it. So every jurisdiction should be exploring this, looking at the options that are illustrated in the, in the law to see what tools they can use to help direct affordable housing in those appropriate areas and come up with any kind of standards that are appropriate for, not just affordable housing, but if it's a multifamily or any kind of residential housing, that it should have equitable for any type of housing. But maybe come up with certain standards that are appropriate for that. You know, right now, I think some of the planners that I've spoken to, they look at this, well, I can see an industrially zoned piece of property, an industrial park being utilized for an affordable housing project. It doesn't make sense to us for someone to propose something like that. So the webinar that I listened to, the speakers talked about with the Florida Housing Coalition, what they said was they don't see a huge influx of projects being thrown down the throat of local jurisdictions to go into industrially zoned properties. They don't, property owner and a developer are going to want to make this work right. They may look at places that have high transit routes that are appropriate for the people who are going to be living in those units. They may look at areas that are adjacent to other services on commercial quarters. So they, it may, that's where you may see the focus of some of these projects. Consistent with even our policies that the city's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee has already adopted and that the city council has adopted. But there may be exceptions. We may get that project that may propose something in an area we really don't believe is appropriate, but as long as they meet the standards of the law, we won't be able to deny it based on a public hearing.
That's what I see. We won't be able to deny it. Member Nelson.
Okay. I want to address the elephant room that we're not talking about, Apollo Gardens. As long as they comply with our ordinances, we have no say in it. As long as the setback's okay, as long as the building heights are appropriate, the...
Like any development, if it meets our zoning requirements and our land development regulations, then if it's found consistent with our code, then yes, we approve it.
Right. And this would sort of make it harder to deny any, any facility similar to Apollo Gardens.
Potentially. I, I have not reviewed the Apollo Gardens project consistent with the Live Local Act to see what they fall under or what they would, are consistent with, to answer that question.
I have to say, I do like the idea of adopting an ordinance regarding the ad valorem tax, basically because I think we need to take charge of where we want to see things go in our city as opposed to having somebody in Tallahassee do that. And I'd also like to see us looking at not allowing this type of housing in wetlands or floodplains, especially wetlands. Because we don't, what is it, one unit per five acres in wetlands?
You're referring to a particular zoning district that has that density criteria. So there's certain, lots of properties that have other zoning districts with wetlands in them.
So what do we do with the wetlands?
Well, our code, I'm sorry. Our code does have a maximum density in wetlands, regardless of zoning.
Okay.
So I don't know that offhand, but it is separate from the zoning district that you're, I believe you're referring to that has that one per five acre requirement.
I'm just really cautious about the idea of putting multifamily units in wetlands and having a, a pod there.
So like any project, it would have to go through any kind of mitigation potentially to address any impacts to wetlands.
Yep. But if you turn around and start putting like an apartment complex in the middle of wetlands, you're basically destroying the wetlands closest to you, is my understanding. You're impacting those wetlands, similar to Outland Helen Hauser. We have the, the wetlands up against the wetlands that Jessica, and those wetlands were denigrated because of the work that we had done prior, you know, 50 years ago. So I'd hate to see that happen to our wetlands.
I don't disagree, but I'm trying, I'm trying to relate the two of these things. The biggest thing I think that you're talking to here is the state taking away our decision-making.
Yeah.
And that's kind of what this local option is all about. They're going to tell us, this is affordable housing, this is what you got to do, and whether you guys want to put it there or not, this is okay. And they, they preempt us, correct?
They preempt you from using certain standards in your decision-making. So if you come up with, if we get a project in a particular zoning district that's commercial-industrial and they meet the other criteria of the law, they'll have to adhere to any other site plan-related requirements of our code. If they meet that, then they have to go forward. Yeah. So in certain, yes, they do preempt us from certain local regulations, yes.
Member Stokel.
Um, yes. So I have a few questions. One, this Live Local Act, is it strictly for low-income and affordable housing? Is that the scope of this act? Okay. So only those types of projects? So we don't have to get into any like multifamily or anything like that? It's just strictly low-income housing that's identified as low-income housing?
It didn't say anything about any type of residential housing, yes.
Okay. And then I guess my second question is the process, and I think we've kind of alluded to this. So somebody, we have somebody that wants to do a low-income housing development project and they do want to do it on industrial or commercial. They still have to go through the same criteria and like submit their application and come before council like they would originally to do a land use and zoning change. Is that correct or no?
If they meet the criteria of the Live Local Act, they do not.
So we would be putting potentially multifamily on industrial? So we would have like non-conforming development?
That's exactly right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Per the statute, it would be considered conforming because the stat-
But it's not. At the same, that's what's really confusing to me because you're on, normally up here, what we do is we change the land use and we change zoning so, and we try to avoid non-conforming situations. But this is making it that they're intentionally putting us into
Exactly.
A situation. So I just want to be clear on that. That, that's what's happening. Okay. And to that point though, I think what was happening at the state level, I feel like there were probably local governments that were denying projects and making it very difficult. In addition to that, I will blame the state as well because they kept not putting money and taking the money out of the Sadowski Fund. So it's like, okay, we're not giving money to it and then we're going to blame local governments on not doing anything either. But, so now they're putting money into it and I think because they've had issues with local governments denying projects that they didn't, they, in my opinion, went the extreme opposite end to take away any control we have, is how I'm seeing this. So I guess my, what I'd like to see is, and I think you talked about this a little bit, is in the meantime, I would like to see something that we can do to potentially have some control where we can potentially have incentivize it to certain areas that we do feel like it's appropriate. it's appropriate. I mean, we have, we have our map with zoning for a reason, for our vision, and so I, I think that would be something I would like to do in the meantime. Another thing I would like to do, though, is as you, as staff is seeing issues coming up, if those can be discussed with us, because a lot of us do have relationships with the state senators and state reps, that's one of my biggest things, and anybody in the public, I, I hope you're understanding, like, the issue here is contact your state rep, contact your state senator, because they don't know if we don't tell them. And so that's, that's really what's happening here. So I'm not looking for, I, I get it, but I feel like there needs to be a better compromise of saying, okay, we're having this issue, we need more affordable housing, what can that look like so that we can both participate? Because right now, I'm, it's frustrating. It's very frustrating, and I'm concerned to what Vice Mayor was saying. I mean, this could, if we don't act now and we don't try to try to get some type of amendment or compromise next year during the session, just seeing this keep happening and happening, it will change the look of not only our city, but potentially other cities where you're going to have different projects in areas that, that wasn't potentially the vision. So it is what it is at this point, but I, I think that we all need to try to do what we can and do our best, given what we're handed down. I, I don't think that even the state level necessarily understands the impact of what they're doing. I think they, it sounds good, it sounds like we're investing in affordable housing, and I think there's good intent there, but it just, we just need some better oversight.
I don't disagree, but I would also say that it seems as though they've been around the block a few times on this one, and as of July 1st, they're moving. And kind of, you know, home rule is, is being hit upon again. Vice Mayor. Yeah, member Cole.
My question is based on our comprehensive plan, and I guess that kind of goes out the window, because if a developer comes in and he has tax credits and grants, he can basically, as long as he meets the requirements, he can build it anywhere in the city that he wants to. Is that a true statement?
Any project has to adhere to our local regulations.
Regulations, but not zoning, though.
Well, even if they, it has to, there's certain criteria that adhere to. So for example, you can't just build a duplex in a, in a commercial development and call it affordable housing. But if you adhere to the other standards that are here inside this law, I'll give you an example. For, there's a threshold inside the law that talks about if the cumulative area of all your commercial industrial land inside your city is less than 20%, then it kind of puts a little more of a restriction on property owners if they're trying to utilize or propose a project inside a commercial develop, a commercial zoning area. It has to be mixed use now. And so we're exploring that. We're looking to see how that impacts the city in some way. Every city is looking at that. If, otherwise, you, if they can adhere to all the standards you see inside the law, we can just have to process the site plan request and just make sure they adhere all to all the other requirements of that code. So every property's going to be a little different. So some properties might be inside our well field there, and some might not be, or some might be close to a road that happens, so every property's a little different.
But I understand that, but if they meet all these requirements, basically it can go anywhere.
I, I don't want to say that it can go anywhere.
Okay.
Because that's, that's a very loaded answer, because there are a lot of restrictions depending on where that project's going.
What I get concerned about is our comprehensive plan and how we want to see what our city to look like. And if we can just put affordable housing anywhere, that's why I agree with everybody else about we need to try to get ahead of this as much as we can, so.
So this really, right now, it's only, it only talks about commercial industrial zoning properties and residential where we have them existing that are multifamily. It doesn't impact single-family subdivisions inside there. It doesn't impact commercial work, work, work front areas, like marinas. It doesn't impact, I believe, conservation or public lands, publicly zoned, I think. I have, there's something else there, some exceptions. So we're still evaluating it. It specifically calls out commercial and zoning, and industrial zoning.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
Yes. The, the other part that I want to acknowledge is that there are certain things that's already in the tax credit guidelines, like if you're building affordable housing and you're looking for a tax credit, there's already some things that, that is going to make this a little bit more challenging, because you, you have to be on a bus line, you have to be certain, you can't be over a certain distance from a shopping mall or center, you can't be too far from a school, and you, you, when you look at industrial parks, you, if you want to look at that, they don't have those particular conveniences. So either the, the transit system will have to change, the school will be, have to be placed out there, or they're going to have to be built in a certain area that meet all of those criteria that has always, already or always have been in, in the, in the requirements for a developer to get tax credit. And like being, again, near school and so forth. And as we move forward, don't forget, those are already built in, that you can't just go out 10 miles outside of town and build something out there and meet, you have to make sure that all of those, they're on a bus line, they are near school, and, and so forth as we go forward in this process. And as we are looking at things, we go forward, as we go forward.
I think right now, I'm going to put that on hold. I'm going to definitely, hopefully, we can all get to that webinar and learn some more. I think that this may be something that we learn as we go. But it does sound as though the, the state has more, as of July 1st, will have more control. My biggest concern is I, we've always tried to, you know, have conformity in, in land use, and it's like that may totally be nothing that comes our way anymore. So again, I don't think there's any reason to continue on with this except to say, we have an idea of what this is about. It does seem as though the state has, you know, they're going to, and I absolutely am for affordable housing, absolutely. We talked about it, gosh, four years ago, I was talking about it. I usually, some of the people in my family as examples that struggle, have been in education for 25 years and can't afford to buy a house, I get it. But at the same time, I hate to lose any control over conformity in land use, and that seems is the way this is going. So with that, thank you so much, and again, I, I hope to get to this webinar, and we'll certainly learn more as cases come our way, I think. So with that, thank you very much. City Manager.
On to item 6A, under Boards and Commissions, the Titusville Environmental Commission's semi-annual report will be presented. No action is required of council.
Or is that in the packet?
It's in the packet, I believe Mr. Majek was going to present it.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. And the missing things. Let me, if I can. Michael Majek, Vice Chair of the Titusville Environmental Commission. Glad to be here. It's not often that I get to do this. Normally Laura Lee would be here, since she's the chair, but she's off at the NOAA Fisheries Meeting and won't be here tomorrow.
Oh, very good.
So we did a lot of work on the Environmental Commission, starting in January this past year. We started talking about our wetland policies, and we made the pitch about having and working toward forested wetlands. And we talked about performance measures in April and made a vote on that in May, which for some reason is no longer going to be on our agenda. And that's what I want to talk to you about. I gave you a copy of the Titusville Environmental Commission Charter. And our charter says that we have specific responsibilities, I highlighted them for you. The one that I'm calling out here has to do with environmental sustainability. It says that we're supposed to provide recommendations for the adoption, prioritization, and implementation of initiatives and actions, policies and programs to support and promote all aspects of environmental sustainability. Well, on the last page, I give you nine items that we pulled from the city manager's metrics that I contend directly impact this chartered statement. Things like our quality of life, how our strategic goals are being monitored by the city and implemented by city staff should be overseen by the Environmental Commission. When we start building, and our building has impacts on the environment, we're the commission that's supposed to be searching that and watching for that and notifying you of that. And we can't do that when city staff takes our agenda items and removes them from our agenda before we even have a meeting, which is what's happening tomorrow. We have two items that the full TEC voted on to discuss in full at this meeting tomorrow, and they've been removed by city staff. So I'd like to know where in our charter it says staff sets the prioritization and agenda items for the TEC. I don't see it in the charter, which means that the Environmental Commission is the group that's responsible for seeing, overseeing the city's decisions as to how our environment is going to survive and look over the coming years. And if we can't do our job, then you won't have to worry about me taking off for the summer and going to the state of Maine and working on clean water for their state constitution. We have a lot of work to do here. We don't need the city staff running interference with the things that we believe the environment needs watching over. So I'm here to ask you, not just to give you the report that the staff presented, because they wouldn't present the things we wanted to present. So I'm here to ask for your help. We have a charter, we want to do our work, but we're being stonewalled by the city when we can't even see what the city's doing, because our own impacts are not being presented to us, we're not allowed to look over them, we're not allowed to comment on them, and as a consequence, you've rendered the TEC moot. You're our leaders. We're a committee that advises you. If you want us to do our work, we need to make that happen. We have no budget, but it says in our charter, we can have public meetings and we can have educational sessions. Without a budget, we can't do anything. We didn't even go to the Enchanted Forest for Earth Day this year. We've done that every year that I've been here, which is going on 12, 15 years now. We need to do better, and we want to work with the city to make this happen, but somebody has to provide oversight so that you guys can have the input that you need. So that's my report.
Member Stokel.
So the report that we have in our packet, is that from you guys or is that from staff?
That's from staff.
And it's not what you, the TEC Board agrees with?
It was not entirely what we agreed with, but it's what staff would allow us to do.
Okay. I guess I'm confused on, like, just reading through them, the wetland policy, the forest...
These were all things that we did.
Okay.
But there are things that are omitted here that we wanted to bring forward.
Okay. And then in regard to your agenda tomorrow, what two items are not on the agenda that you wanted to be on the agenda?
The first, let me pull it up here, since I don't want to speak out of turn. The first had to do with a mistake in our January minutes, and as you may recall, our meetings are not videoed. It was supposed to be audio recorded, but it wasn't. There was an error. And so the minutes were incorrect, and we noted that they were incorrect a month later. We brought it back up and said the TEC never said that we wanted to just have an audio recording. We wanted video and audio recordings. It didn't come out that way in the minutes. Staff had changed it to be just audio, which is not what we said. We'll fix that tomorrow. We'll just simply call for a new vote. But the point was, there was an error. It was an error made by staff. It was people on the TEC that called it out. Staff said, no, we can't do that. Rule 13 is only good for the next meeting. The date is wrong. You want to live with it or not? Staff wants to live with it. We don't. That was one. The other had to do with the way we were bringing items before us to communicate. We had people from the public would bring us topics, and so we'd put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Another example, we voted on letting you know that we think that the city should support Dr. Jeff Greenberg's efforts to start monitoring our stormwater. You haven't seen that. Staff wrote back and said, we have 15 questions we'd like to ask Dr. Greenberg. Dr. Greenberg, he's not seen any questions. Why is staff getting in the way of a recommendation by the board? There's more, but I think that should be enough.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. But further discussion.
So please, take a look at these goals on the last page I gave you. These were from the city manager's goals, and I got to pull one of them up here. These are nine items here that I believe affect our environment. These were nine goals that the city uses to determine its budget for the next year. We're not interested in talking about last year's metrics. We're talking about getting involved in the loop next year. We want to have some say in what the metrics are that we're measuring. What's important? Should it be staff that decides that or the citizens? That's my question.
Or the, or the council. And as you and I have talked extensively, Mike, I think it's important that we all are on the same page and that you guys have the opportunity to advise us with your best knowledge. And that's what I think you're trying to do, and that's what I want. I want to have a board that is an advisory board, and you use your knowledge and expertise and quite honestly, your focus to advise what you think is best. And that's what I always, a lot of times, I'll talk to you guys separately.
Yes.
Because I want to know what you're thinking. That being said, I also wanted to add, before you get out of there, and we already actually talked about this a little already today, but as you know, I think I was at least one of the people who proposed it. We want to move forward with moving towards some television, and that's going to have to be in the next budget. That's going to be in the works very soon.
Good.
So I just want to, you know, let you know where, and I can't say that's happened because we haven't voted on it, do all the right things, but it's obviously, once something that I will speak for myself, I want to see done.
I apologize for not hanging out at the last meeting to answer your question about my request to...
No, 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 but I'm sure you did watch the last meeting. It had nothing to do with, oh, we've got to go. My concern is, as again we discussed, if we get two that do that, I think we're, it would be okay. It would be okay. I think, member Nelson, had something.
Hi, this is my thought, and I apologize because I'm losing my voice quickly.
Quickly.
Quickly. So I'm going to try to finish this before. To me, you guys are a policy board helping us make policies.
Yeah.
You're not a board that turns around and monitors stormwater, monitors water quality, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that came home to me when we were talking about the, the tree canopy and the forestry report, and I don't think, you know, you, I thought we did pretty much everything you guys asked. We said, consider A, B, C, D. And then I hear back that the TEC is angry because we didn't demand ABC, and that's not what we do. We're a policy board.
I think you misunderstood what the TEC was asking for. We were trying to eliminate invasive trees and plants. And the way to do that is to identify them as Florida native or Florida friendly. Everything else, under IFAS's definition, is not friendly and invasive, either... Everything else under IFIS's definition is not friendly and invasive, either class one, two, or three. So what we made the suggestion was that we changed the value of what we were basing our, for our trees, for our cities, for our future.
And we did it.
No, we didn't.
No, we said, staff, this is something we want to do. Please change it so that it's in there. But I think I talked to one, one of the citizens and I said, she goes, well, we have a list here. Well, we don't take the list and just yank this out and throw that in. It's sort of, you've got to sit down and say, these are the ones we want, these are the ones that are going to work, these are the ones over here that aren't going to work. It's, it doesn't quite go like that. It's, there's a process there.
Yes, and we followed that process, and it didn't make it clear when it got to you. We were literally trying to remove just the noxious plants.
Right.
And we came up with a way to do that. But when the, shall we say, the consultant's word I'm looking for that we hired, they merged it all back together again. So we're right back with all the noxious species being added to their definition of what can be planted. And so we've gained nothing. The only tree that got removed was the Sylvester palm.
And let's kind of, in that discussion there, except to say that, again, I appreciate you advising us and, and the passion with which you guys do it. But I remember that meeting and felt like we came away on the same page, us and the T E C. And I even felt like I said, yeah, see, we do listen to what you say because you, I don't know much about invasive plants. That's why I keep asking questions. So if we can get on the same page and communicate and you advise and we do what we can, that's, that's where we're at. And I appreciate that, Mike, I really do.
Look at, look at the, look at the sentence.
I do it. I got it right here. Appreciate it.
It's more than just advising. So, well.
Thank you for your time.
We'll leave it at that. Thank you, sir.
And what I would suggest is that you let us zoom in so we can participate while we're out of town.
Say again? Wait, so, Mike, you're coming back? You forgot your cane. Don't forget if you can duplicate that one day. Okay, brother. Let's see, that was, Board's, City Manager.
Onto item six B is consider the Titusville Environmental Commission regular member Jim Yance's request for a three-month leave of absence from the Titusville Environmental Commission meetings for the months of June, July, and August of 2023.
I'm not assuming, Brad, you have anything to add to that, do you?
No, sir.
Okay, you're, you're there. Remember Nelson?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
My question would be, are we going to have a quorum in July? I think it's July you're gone.
Well, my understanding is that we have alternates that can fill in while we have the two gone. I have discussed my concerns with having two gone at the same time, but it seems as though we
We're covered.
We can be fine. And I'll be honest with you, down the road, as we are able to do it television-wise, we could probably have the technology for someone to be able to do it remote. And that's something we'll talk about as we approve that in the budget. So with that, Vice Mayor Robinson.
You got to remember that there are certain standards, a certain percentage of the board or any commission to vote on things, a certain percentage has to be present.
You have to have a physical quorum present.
Before that you can do anything.
Right, that obviously having a quorum.
No matter whether they can view it or not. Two is that it is an advisory, keep in mind that it is an advisory commission, and I understand number three, Romo numeral three, provide recommendations on adoption. That probably should have been worded a little bit different, prioritized. You know, that's, that is, can be perceived that the Environmental Protection has the right to tell the city what to do. And that is not part of this process. They make recommendations, and we do our best to make the decision that is in alignment with what they do, what they're trying to do. But we take in a greater number of factors than the advisory commission. And that's my thoughts on it.
Yeah, and, and again, I would say, and I think we digressed a little bit there, but I, I am always proud when we take advisory comments and input from our advisory boards. They're an advisory board, planning and zoning is an advisory board, which means that they research and give us advice, so to speak. And we move forward in the way we best see fit. I always like to take their input, though, because that's why they're there. So, but, and I know you do, but I'm saying that I think we've kind of all said, they're an advisory board, and I think as, remember Nelson said, they're not a mandate board. And I don't think they're looking at themselves that way. Now, back to this particular topic, the T E C leave of regular member Jim Yount. Do I have any comments on that?
If, what is the effect, Mr. Mayor, if, if they don't have a quorum?
I don't know, the city attorney, you seem to be the guy we go to on this quorum thing. I don't think we have a problem with a quorum because we do have alternates in there as well, and alternates do count as part of the membership when it comes to counting for a quorum.
Correct. If they need to be, need to serve to constitute a quorum, that's the purpose of the alternate.
So I, again, so I'm not seeing a problem. Let me, Mike, this is my deck. We don't have a problem because we have the alternates, correct? There's not going to be a quorum problem. That's, that was my understanding. So that's, that's where we're at. We have the alternates would fill in and we would have a quorum.
In that case, Mr. Mayor, I make the motion of a?
Let's get a card first. But hold that, keep that lit up. Call the card, please.
Yes, sir, one card, Stan Johnston.
I just want to put a plug in for Mr. John, he's very qualified, and please approve this. He's very qualified in environmental issues. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
I make the motion to approve the leave of absence for the regular member, Mr. Jim Yount.
Second.
A motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Stokoe. Roll call, vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Stokoe?
Yes.
The leave is approved unanimously. City Manager?
Onto item six C, which is the Planning and Zoning Commission alternate member, John Robert Rogers, excuse me, emailed staff indicated a request for leave of absence from the commission meetings during the month of July 2023 due to personal reasons.
Okay, council, any comment on that before I go to the cards? See no comment? Cards?
Yes, sir, I think we have two cards, Mr. Rogers. Is this the item that you wanted to speak on?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then, so one card, Stan Johnston.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Stan Johnston, I'm a professional engineer and I have a application in that's been for the P and Z Commission, and, and this is relevant to this issue, is that, as you may know, you should know, is that the P and Z Commission is lacking some personnel. So, and that has been going on for how many months? Several months. And you have, you even have a candidate is, has applied for it and you don't bring it up to, to vote on it, which is kind of strange. I mean, you have a need and then you don't, you don't put it, put it forward to vote on it. That happens to be Stan Johnston, you know? It's, it's kind of interesting is that, that you have a need and yet you refuse to even consider it. So this is, this is not, it does not seem very appropriate. So this, this has to do with this very issue of whether you're going to have quorums or not and whether you are staffing as you are supposed to. So shame on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Any other cards? I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Can, any discussion or motion?
I do a motion.
Please.
Move to approve alternate John Rogers' request for a leave of absence for planning and zoning commission meetings for the month of July 2023.
Second.
Motion from Member Nelson, second from Member Cole, roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, petitions and requests from the public. Come on up. She was ready. She was up before I could even get it out of my mouth.
Megan Moscoso, thirty, thirty-one, Demerit Drive. I've been reading the Live Local Act as well. Yeah, I met you at the YMCA. And I just want to echo, if I heard you correctly, it's not July first. And so what ordinances can we put in place before Live Local takes off? And so I, I would just like to consider that, what are some things that possibly we could discuss before that? But I'm here to talk about Apollo Gardens. During our last council meeting on May twenty-third, many of my neighbors have raised concerns. We've been here quite a few times about Apollo Gardens. And Member Fason, who is part of the Planning and Zoning Committee, he spoke in favor of Carrefour's project in Melbourne, Florida, which is called Heritage Park. Now, Carrefour has made many attempts to persuade the community, and by, what I mean by the community, not our neighborhood of Royal Oak, but many members and politics and things here in Titusville that Heritage Park is a wonderful place to live. However, we don't believe that is success. It's a twenty-two million dollar plus building, and it appears impressive, but it has come a significant cost to the city of Melbourne and to the citizens. Between May twenty twenty-two and May twenty twenty-three, the police were dispatched to twenty-five fifty Grant Street, that's the location of Heritage Park, four hundred and thirty-six times. Okay, that means a police officer visited at least every day, in some cases, twice a day. Is this what we want in the middle of our neighborhood in Royal Oak? Okay, the report includes twenty-eight cases of assault, a hundred and twenty-six incidences of disturbance, ten cases related to mental illness, some requiring Baker Act intervention, three cases involving narcotics, five incidences of overdoses, and so on and so forth. And this is supposed to be good for our neighborhood. That's what we're being told. As a neighborhood consisting primarily of seniors and young family, my concern revolves around the availability of the Titusville Police, which we have some here today, to effectively handle the situation and ensure the safety of not only Royal Oaks, but La Seda, Shangri-La, this entire area. Another major concern we have is a lack of community resources available for the specific population. Many of us can attest to the difficulties in accessing health care here in our town. Despite being here over two years, I face consistent changes and cancellations from doctors at Parish, leading me to transfer back to my doctor in Orlando. This is an issue, as I discussed with people, that's very prevalent here in town. People go and receive their care. I'm someone who has health insurance, I have a car, I have the ability to make these calls, and even I'm finding it very difficult to get quality health care right here. Now.
Can you finish in a minute?
Yes, sir.
Can we give her a minute? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. On the city of Titusville website, they list eleven service providers for mental health issues. However, out of these eleven providers, only two are located in Carrefour, in Titusville, one of those being Circles of Care. Circles of Care doesn't have a doctor on site. They have a nurse every other Thursday, and what they mainly do is telehealth, and this is who Carrefour is saying will be providing part of their care. So my question is, this limited availability, it raises concerns about the adequacy of medical support in our community. Apollo Gardens, to me, feels like an impending hurricane, which nobody is preparing for. Not only are the essential services lacking for patients who will reside there, but we question whether the local police for, has the necessary personnel to effectively handle the demands of this type of supportive housing.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you. Mr. Parish, before I go further, because we may get some more of those, can you give me the most recent update on your correspondence with this, in this project?
We received responses to our first review of their site plan only late Friday afternoon. And so I, I only came back this morning, so I was informed of that. So we're reviewing their responses and their resubmital. So far, as far as I know, all we have is comments, responses to this, our first review of the site plan, but as far as I know, I didn't, I'm not aware of whether we received a formal resubmital of the site plan consistent with our comments. So that's where we are right now. So we're still looking into what they've given to us.
So what's your take on that? I understood that we, we were able to read their responses. Are you feeling that there's any question about their ability to come here or not?
I mean, we've, the way the process it works is that we review their site plan, provide a comment letter and give it to the applicant. These are the things you're inconsistent with, with the code, and we have questions. So then the applicant's supposed to respond to those in writing and give us a formal, a complete resubmital of all their site plan, applicant, documents, all, the whole site plan, all the engineering drawings, updated, consistent with what we pointed out were the inconsistencies. I don't know if they've submitted that yet. I haven't had an opportunity to work with our staff to figure that out. So all I know is that on Friday, late afternoon, after hours, we received by email response to our written comments. And what I reviewed this morning answered a lot of our questions. So we're still reviewing it, but I, I, based on what I've read so far, it seems to be consistent with our code. So if, if that's correct, and all the other standards of, they meet all the other standards of our land of regulations for an approved site plan, we're going to go forward and approve this. But right now, it's, we're still waiting on a formal resubmital.
All right, next, go ahead, you have something?
So I think this is really for Mr. Broome over there. So if these people come in and we are getting multi, or maybe Commander back there, and we're getting multiple, multiple calls for service from the police to these apartments, what recourse do we have?
Of course, that would depend on the nature of the calls and, and what's being created by those calls. There, of course, any development that comes in may meet code, but over time, if they violate the code, that becomes a code enforcement issue. If we find out that they're not complying with our code, they're doing things that exceed their permits, at that point, we would have to investigate. Code enforcement would, would get involved and take it to the code board. And so it depends on, is it a nuisance issue or other issues? But that would be addressed through code enforcement.
And that would be if it becomes a nuisance?
Correct. It all depends on.
Sort of similar to the lounge we had over on Delia, remember?
Great coach after the day.
Yeah, yeah. Where you had a lot of violence, a lot of fighting.
Sure, it all depends on, on, on the facts and, and what's determined based on the police calls and the residents, and whether or not a property rises to that level, then we will take appropriate action, whether that's an injunction, whether we want to declare it a public nuisance, or whether it's any other violation of our code. We'd involve code enforcement and require them to come into compliance or face potentially daily fines, so.
So if they move in Monday, following Monday, you've already had ten calls out there, is there a charge for those calls?
I'm not aware of a charge for police calls. You know, we have a certain, our code about false alarms that.
Correct. I think I paid one of those.
We don't charge, people pay tax, we don't charge every time there, there's a call. I'm going to let the police address that if they don't address that more. But at some point, if the police feels, breach that level of a nuisance, we get complaints, then we will have to take action.
As I'm looking at, I'm going, four hundred and thirty-six calls out. That's two, three hours worth of service, and we're paying for it. So I'm sort of not happy with that, and I'm sure the citizens wouldn't be happy. Okay. I think that's our answer.
Petitions and requests continue.
You know, there's still things, things I want to say. Stan Johnston, a professional engineer, and I'm licensed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And to this end, I've repeatedly been a witness and photographed, videotaped, and this is what I've sent you, I've sent you these photos and so forth. I want your attention, please, because what's going on is, is that we had this sewage field in September, October, November, and it, and what happened was during Hurricane Eon, they, the sewage lines had excessive infiltration, and the sewage went up into the manholes, overflowed the manholes, overflowed the lift station, and so forth, and so forth. And witnesses, and I've got even videotapes of it. None of that is, I sent, see these red notices? I sent red notices on, on doors of City Hall, County Court. I sent red notices on, on doors of City Hall, County Courthouse, and, uh, churches and so forth, like Mr. Robinson's church, went to people's doors like, uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, Dr. uh, Stokel, and so forth. And so, so what now, even after I did this, this guy right here, our city manager, says it never happened. It never happened in this sewage spill. In other words, what people were doing, when they go get their mail, they were going through the sewage, mixed with water. When they go, when they go driving their car, and they come back and they track it in their house. And the city was supposed to, what they're required to do, is they're supposed to even notify, just like, is, is put signs up saying, hey, you know, you got a sewage spill, it's right there at your front door. And the city didn't do it, and then only the city didn't do it, but this guy denies it, our city manager. And he tells you guys to deny it too. But it happened. And so what I would do is, this is Florida statutes eight thirty-eight point oh two-two. It talks about false reports. It's a felony. He's committing a felony. I want you to fire him. You see, we even had, if you look in the papers, is, is this boy who's, uh, who's paralyzed right now, supposedly, allegedly, by sewage spill, that the City of Titusville, even denies him. This is serious stuff, and this, this is my business, so it's, it's upsetting to me. It's upsetting to me, do we have this guy who is a liar, a cheat and a shyster? I've said that many times. And you should fire him without any, some kind of a golden parachute. Because he's a liar, a cheat and a shyster. There's no question about it. I'm not alleging it, I'm just telling you facts.
Stop clock.
Yes, sir.
I, I know it's petitions and requests, and I'd love you to talk about anything. You can talk about what could be spills, what could be lake overflows, however you want to look at it. But at the same time, this, this personal stuff is, is not, not impressive.
It is appropriate, it is very much appropriate. You're wrong, you're wrong.
I decided it's appropriate.
No, you do not. I have freedom of speech, because I'm telling the truth. I'm telling the truth, and you shouldn't, you shouldn't stop me.
You got two seconds to get started on something on time.
No, sir, no, sir, I have time, I've got, I've got time on the clock.
Go.
All right, thank you. All right, now I want you all to listen to this. Is this guy is lying and he's a cheat and a shyster?
Stop the clock, have a seat.
No, sir.
Have a seat.
No, sir.
Have a seat.
I, I'm telling the truth.
I told you that you needed to talk about something.
I'm not gonna have a seat.
You said it before, you need to have a seat.
No, sir. No, sir.
You're caught, you're caught.
Okay. I'm doing it, let's say, what do you call it, uh, against my will. So, you're taking me, taking me to a seat against my will, and you, and I have time on the clock. That's illegal, what you're doing.
Further petitions and requests, please.
Um, Maria Hilton, uh, thirty-one hundred, Demerit Drive. Um, I would first, and, and of course, it's the Apollo Gardens thing. Um, part of the Live Local Act, I would just really encourage you guys to read it, that's not what I'm going to talk about, but one of the line items in it in section fifty-eight, uh, dot five forty-two, says, finding for denial of CUP requests when the municipal planning board, small, and city council find that a proposed location for congregate living facility would substantially alter the nature and character of an area by creating a concentration of such facilities, the conditional use, conditional use permit may, may be denied, and it goes on to say some things, unless you, um, break the Fair Housing Act that it falls under. So, it's, not all of your decisions are going to be removed. You guys will still have many things that you can, so as, I just would encourage you to read that, because there's a lot of nuances in that.
Stop the clock, only because I don't want you to lose any of your time. I'm, I'm gonna be the first to, I don't quite understand at all. It just concerns me that it looks like, when it comes to us deciding that this six-story building doesn't fit over by these houses, they can say, well, too bad. So, that, that concerns me. And like I said, we've got a, um, online event coming up Thursday that I definitely need to be a part of, but thank you for that, start the clock, thank you.
Um, so, the question I have is, uh, for Brad. I've emailed a couple of times, but no response. Um, you're, in your comment letter that you guys sent to them, um, which, thank you for emailing that to me, one of the things that you keep asking is, um, are the onsite behavioral health services open to the public? Are they strictly for resident? Um, but based on Eddie Galindo's, I think is his last name, comment on the definition, because you guys, he stated at the last meeting that you guys use the definition used within each conditional use permit as a standard for this, now they need to apply for a conditional use permit. Um, and he stated the residential treatment facility. Um, that one's not really in question for me, because I don't think they meet that definition. Um, but the definition I have questions about is the residential slash professional use. So, business services, professional services being allowed on a residentially zoned property would, that's all it says in the definition, is business services and professional services. And it has examples, um, but that's all it says, is professional services. And so, you're asking them a question that's not within that definition, therefore, I don't feel like it's meeting code. Um, so, and I'd asked you, maybe there's some other way you're asking them that, but to me, it would need a conditional use permit. Am I incorrect in that? Because I just feel like it's getting slipped under the radar, and I feel like that would bring it in front of a public hearing. And then let them decide, let planning and zoning decide, you know, what they want to do from there. But I just feel like, right now, it's, you're letting them go through this, but I do feel like a conditional use permit is required.
Ma'am, are you saying that they're consistent, what they're proposing is consistent with the use that you found?
I'm saying it's inconsistent. I'm saying you need a con-
Then why would they need a conditional use permit if you're saying it's inconsistent with the use that you found?
I'm saying the residential professional use is a conditional use permit.
And so, they're consistent with that use? Because if that's what you're saying-
Go ahead, go ahead.
Then you'd have to, but you're, I, I don't understand. Are you saying that, that's what they're consistent with, and that's what you're asking me?
They, yes, they, you're, under this, it just, the only definition for this is business services and professional services. So, that being on a residential site would require a conditional use permit.
So, I found some examples of project or, uh, permits being issued, uh, using that use, and that is typically a, a home-based business. And we had a home-based business, um, use, or we have allowance for home-based businesses and for single-family homes, for example, inside our code. And if you remember, if you go over a certain threshold of impact, then what I found were some examples where someone would have to go through this special conditional use permit. But since then, since, just a few years ago, the legislature also approved another law saying that we can't deny home-based businesses. In other words, it made a lot, it made it much more expansive. I'm not sure how that can apply, what has typically, uh, historically been used for home-based businesses, apply to this affordable house, or I'm sorry, this multifamily development. So, I'm not sure where you're going. Are you trying to say that, that, that's what they should fall under?
Mm-hmm.
And if, if that's so, if they, if you find it to be consistent with that, then how would anyone be able to deny or restrict that use?
I, well, I'm saying they would need the conditional use permit. They would actually need to apply for it, which, in which case, it wouldn't be, because right now, nothing's going before Planning and Zoning Commission, and nothing is going before them. And I feel like this would require that, and so.
So, what we found historically, like I said, was this associated, those, that use was associated with approvals for a home-based business, they had to go through a, a certain public hearing because it was going above and beyond a certain threshold that was allowed for a typical home-based business.
But ba, based on, I'm not trying, I promise I'm not trying to argue, I'm just trying to understand.
I just don't see how that applies to a multifamily use that is actually specifically listed as a use that's permitted in the zoning district.
All right, let's re, reload here, because what's supposed to happen is, you're supposed to ask me and I ask him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I couldn't have worded it as good as you did, so I let you do that. So, and I got a lot out of that as well, but if you could perhaps, uh, maybe get with Brad, uh, after the meeting, during the meeting, something, um, but it's, I don't want him to get caught up in answering every question like that. But I thought it was a good question, and that is an important point, because I'm starting to hear from the group that, well, maybe we can get him on a, on a CUP. And having talked to, uh, Brad earlier on that sort of thing, he kind of gave me the same answer. Well, that doesn't apply, but I think it's something that can be further discussed.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Thanks.
Uh, petitions and requests next.
Making a lot of noise my turn. My name's Janet Davis, I live at sixteen fourteen, Ternessa Drive. And I'm here about Apollo Gardens. Um, I have lived in my house for fifty-four years. And I back up, I'm the closest house to where Apollo Gardens would be. And, um, the only way, I don't know if you realize, the only way in and out, it's back, it's in, back in the cul-de-sac, the only way in and out is right by my house, Demerit Drive, which is only developed, um, it's only maintained right up to where my, to the corner there, of Ternessa and Demerit. So, there's only one way in and out, because the other, uh, there's no access to any main street. And then those streets are two, two, Demerit and Ternessa are two neighborhood streets, small neighborhood streets. Um, now, I've lived there a long time, I raised my children there, and I hope to live out my life there, at that location. And I remember a time, I can't remember when it was, but people wanted to put apartments back there. I'm, I can't remember really well, because it was a long time ago, but I think it was similar to Morningside. And I remember, what I remember is Tom Marianni coming to our house and telling us that the city couldn't allow it because there wasn't good enough access for that many units. And it's, nothing's changed, it's just the same, the access is the same, which is hardly any. And so now I'm hearing that not only can we expect, uh, the, the traffic from eighty-three, eighty-four units, but also the services that these people will require. And now, um, like Heritage Park has had, uh, numerous need for emergency or whatever, police and ambulances, fire, whatever. That's a lot of traffic for this, and I would, I just want whoever is considering this to consider that, because it seems important to me that, um, this much going on with so little way to get in and out seems kind of inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next petitions and requests. We've got a couple of them. You beat them.
My name is Michael Dewire. I moved here about-
What's your address?
Um, twenty-eight fifty-two, Demerit.
Thank you.
I live right across the street from the proposed Apollo Gardens site. Um, I had moved here from Pennsylvania about a year and a half ago, which was a highly crime area where I left. Um, the problem I see with this Apollo Gardens project is it could cause drop, definitely in property values. It could cause a lot of crime and possible drug use and a lot of problems that I feel right now is going on deaf ears with the city for some reason. It's not really being addressed, I feel. Brad's been kinda Nixon, all the people that have spoke about it lately, I feel, and just don't feel that it's being addressed like it should be. I feel it's a super bad idea to put it in this area. You're in a nice, small, quiet community there, and it's going to turn into a big mess if they put this Apollo Gardens project in there. It's something that I see that is going to be detrimental to this city and everything. And I would appreciate the city to look into this better and possibly find a way to stop this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, I appreciate it. You beat them.
Christopher Childs, fifty-six twenty-seven, Chantin Avenue. Um, so, let me throw out a scenario real, well, real quick. I think a, a lot of us, anyone who's worked in the corporate world, has probably run into this before, where you have a peer member, a peer on another team that's, always wants to try to do your job for you. They always want to try to jump in and, and do your job and, and, uh, you, you keep telling them, hey, because they think, you know, for, they probably have the best intentions, they think that they can do your job better than you. And so, you, you tell the boss and they, they tell him, you know, lay off. And, and I think of this scenario because it, it seems, it, it brings it up for me because of the Right to Clean Water Amendment. And it seems like when the voters voted for the amendment and they were acting as a legislative body, and then another legislative body yourselves had an issue, and you're doing your job, because you're doing your due diligence of, we have to make sure that it's, that, that it went through the right process. Totally understand that. You did that, you went, you, you sent it up, you know, to the judge. The judge said, no, go ahead and, and, and do it. And it just seems like at this point that you're that coworker that's trying to do our jobs for us as voters who overwhelmingly voted for it, eighty-two percent, over eighty-two percent. And it just seems like, you know, another legislative body shouldn't interfere with another one. And you're, you're on the same level, and I, I, I can see your concerns with, with, you know, the legality of, of it, if you don't like it, I know, I know, I've asked other people, you know, were you confused about, you know, did you, did you realize it was for the, for the legal water, you know, not just drinking water? Yes, I mean, I don't think that anyone thought that pollution to drinking water was the, the foremost thing about that amendment. So, I don't think there was any confusion from the voters that they knew what they were voting for. I knew what I was voting for. And I, I would just like for the city council to withdraw their, their petition to the court and go ahead and adopt the amendment, uh, and, and just listen to the people. The people have spoken, I just, I just want you guys to listen. Thank you.
Hey, Chris.
Can the attorney talk?
I don't know. Member Nelson?
And I don't want to talk about, I'm, I want to talk about the procedure. Right now, we have an Orange County case that says A, and we have a Brevard County case that says B. And those need to be reconciled so that we have one law as opposed to two separate laws. So, that's one of the, to me, one of the big issues. So, it needs to go forward.
All right, next petition and request person. Are you gonna sing?
I mean, I could if you really, really wanted me to. Yeah, no, I got the kid over here too, we can do a duet.
She's good.
Do I need to say my ad-
Name and address, name and city.
My name's Melinda Villan, uh, two thirty-six Acorn Drive. Um, and I live in the beautiful historic neighborhood of Indian River City. I love our house, I finally have a library. I love my street, half of the houses were built before nineteen forty. I love my neighborhood, originally founded in nineteen fourteen, but my part wasn't included until the mid twenties. Our property also happens to border possibly only alleyway not incorporated into the neighboring properties, either through correct buffering, the alley being abandoned by the city, or through agreements with the neighboring properties. It is technically twenty feet across, but only about sixteen feet is paved. It is also a dead end, and my driveway at the time of our sale was the only property with any driveway attached to the alley. Not many people want to live in our house because of how close it is to commercial zone. And like we're trying to find out now, what's up with the city-owned alley, but that is not city-maintained, uh, that's in between incompatible uses. But we researched before we bought it, and according to the zoning laws, we had extra protections through buffering between incompatible uses as stated in multiple ordinances from the city, specifically listing our neighborhood zoning. According to the RRC Neighborhood Plan, the boundaries for IRCR and IRCC runs right down the middle of the alley. Also, according to the Neighborhood Plan, the commercial zones cannot encroach on residential areas, and extra buffering needs to be put in place, with a section of pointing out the specific need for extra buffering for the businesses on Hopkins into the residential neighborhood behind said businesses. Our property completely borders the east side of the alley that is zoned residential. The west side zone commercial, uh, has a property that is being used as a residential property at the beginning of the alley, and about halfway through starts a commercial property owned by a business. In the four years we have owned our home, we have had four businesses own the commercial property. Almost every time, the realtor says there's access to the back alley, and every time we fret when we see that, as every single time, we have had a part of our property destroyed from them using the alley to access the back of their property. Over the holidays, my current neighbor decided to cut a sixty-five inch concrete pathway into the alleyway buffer and pavement to lead from the alleyway to their shed, that is over twenty-five percent of the twenty-foot alley. Their unpermitted easement is mostly catted corner, but partially directly across from my driveway, and they have since created an unofficial loading dock down the middle of the alley, blocking my driveway, including a delivery from a FedEx freight truck that literally spanned the length of my house and backed down the alley less than six, six feet from my property line with my child at home. I can honestly say that in the years that we have owned my house, we have never had proper enjoyment of the property because of being worried about commercial vehicular encroachments and damage to our property from the business next door using the alleyway. I would appreciate some guidance as to what rights we have, and to ask that if the unpermitted pathway that was cut into the alley was illegally done, that the alleyway be restored with proffer buffers put in place between incompatible zoning, uh, according to the Neighborhood Plan, so it does not become a prescribed easement down the line. Thank you.
So, hold up. That's why you read so fast. You were gonna get that in, in three minutes.
Oh, yes, I was, sir.
You did, with seven seconds to spare. But with that said, now I need you to put in your own words, because I really struggled with that. Um, what, what's the street, where, where?
Um, I, I live off Acorn, um, and, and there is a dead-end alley right next to my, um, I live directly across from where the, the North Brevard Sharing Center is, if you've been there.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. And there's a little alley, and there's a church back there.
Uh, there's no, on my alley, dead ends. There's nothing but my property, a, on the residential side, runs the whole alley length. And then on the other side, on the commercial side, is a property at the beginning of the alleyway that's being used as a- is a property at the beginning of the alleyway that's being used as a residential. And then the next thing is a commercial property that frontages on Hopkins.
Okay. So, the problem, and you've got an alley, and you've got the Hopkins here, and what is the problem?
I don't know what our rights are as far as buffering and them using the alleyway.
Who's them?
The business behind, that we share the alleyway with. That's where their backyard goes up against the alleyway. And my understanding with buffer zones, especially with the neighborhood plan and everything that's put in place where it says additional screening, additional buffer zones in between incompatible uses, they should have a solid fence wall or hedge there, so they wouldn't have any access to the alleyway at all if they had proper buffers put in place.
Okay. Have you spoken to staff at all?
I called last week, but right now, it's when they back, they feel they have, they can back a freight FedEx truck down my alley when my child's at home. It's a safety issue. I called last week, and I hadn't gotten an answer yet, and this was the next thing to come to where I could try to get an answer.
Yeah, and I'm glad you did. Like I said, I'm trying to figure out, I think I-
Yeah, I know. It's weird. It's such a weird situation, and that's why looking it up and trying to get answers, like, there's only so much we could find out.
Brad, who should she call, and how would that work? Thank you. That's the best answer we have.
Thank you.
Because she's definitely, you're fast.
I am. My directors tell me to slow down all the time.
I was going to, and I thought, I'm gonna let her go. Because I got the feeling she's trying to, she's got, and you did.
I have researched.
I'm glad you're here, and I'm, matter of fact, I'm probably gonna try to drive back there and get an idea of what you're saying. I think I make sure I'm in the right area because it's behind that thrift shop.
It's catty-corner to that, yes.
And, okay. See if I can't get back. Not that I have an answer. I just want to get a visual of that.
Oh, yeah.
And then Brad, Mr. Parrish should be the guy to talk to.
Fantastic.
All right.
If you call tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
I try. I really do. Thank you.
Wow.
Hello.
Hey, how are you?
Christopher Hilton, thirty-one hundred Demerit Drive. And tonight, I have a couple questions and requests. One would be questioning upon someone applying for a conditional use permit or rezoning of a property. Is there any sort of, other than knocking on a few doors three hundred feet away, signage that has to be posted prior to a meeting for these type of events?
Stop the clock, because I'm not sure exactly what you're asking, what kind, what type of events.
If a development is coming in and applying for a conditional use permit or rezoning, what is the requirements for them to notify the public?
You want to answer that one? I don't know that that's appropriate with them, but-
So, notice, it's a postcard noticing the date of the public hearings are sent to the property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property. And then the staff also places a sign on the property facing the public right of way.
Okay. My question about the signage.
Go ahead and start the clock, Dylan.
So, my question about the signage, what is the requirements on that? Is it a simple piece of paper, like a one corner of the property? Because if not, I would propose that for thirty days, stump signs be mandatory on the property so that the public can visually see these changes coming, so that they have the opportune time.
Let me have him answer again. There are standards, there are days, and there are sizes.
I have to look at the code to see specifically, but I know we're tasked to try and put, send out notices and post a sign within a certain timeframe before the first public hearing. Typically, with a conditional use permit, there'd be two public hearings and a rezoning or anything like that would probably require also a minimum of two public hearings. And so before that first one, I think it's about ten or so days, we're supposed to at least have that sign out there on that property. Then the, we also post a lot of the proposals that we have in review or have received on our website. So, there is an interactive map where you can see a lot of these, location of where these applications are being proposed.
My concern is that not every resident within more than five hundred feet away, driving by, knows what's going on. Not everyone is always checking the website for certain papers. I want the community to know what is gonna happen on their own streets. And a big enough visual sign that is saying that there is a meeting in thirty days, that's what I would like to see.
And I-
I don't know how to forward, move forward this as far as submitting some changes to our current requirements, but I would like to proceed this further.
All right. Point taken. Thank you. Next petition and requestor.
Is this an appropriate time to ask or to comment on the Dairy Road?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
We're gonna get to there. Any other petitions or requests? Hey, you're in the wrong time, too.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Bruce Moia. I am the Space Coast Home Builders Association Chairman of the Government Affairs, and in response to the Live Local Act, we have actually put together a subcommittee for affordable housing. So, I just want to let you know that that's a resource that's available to you. We're made up of realtors, attorneys, bankers, engineers, so, and affordable housing developers. So, we are meeting to discuss the issues that are coming up. And I also want to let you know that the city of Melbourne, as we're meeting here, is in their final reading of their affordable housing ordinance. So, that's another resource. You might want to look into what they've done. And I think Councilperson Stokel had a really good point, because that was something I was gonna mention, so I'm gonna repeat what she said. If you feel that you're having a little trouble being able to deny something that you might not like, to make incentives to where they're almost irresistible to make them go where you want them to go, might be more appropriate. And if you look at the way Melbourne crafted their ordinance, there are some pretty good incentives there. They're having a real problem getting workers for their businesses, so they're making it pretty wide open, because they really, really need affordable housing because they are losing talent because they can't afford to live in Melbourne. And they have a lot of business there, good businesses. My understanding is that affordable housing goes up to one hundred twenty percent of the median annual income. That could be up to about eighty-five thousand dollars for a household. That's not low income. That's affordable. So, there's a, hopefully, there's not a confusion on what's considered low income and what's considered affordable, because affordable could be someone with a really good job. So, they're trying to, you know, bring in housing that's gonna allow those people to work in their city. And if you can make it appropriate to really incentivize developers to go where you want them to go, that's, I think that's a really good path for you guys, because only the developers are gonna build the affordable housing, and the only way they're gonna build it is if you give them a good reason to build it. So, I just want to let you know what's happening out in other parts of the county, and that we're here. If you choose to reach out to us, we are gonna be discussing the issue at great length. So, feel free to call us.
All right. Thank you very much. We got more moving, more movement, more movement. I think he's leaving. No, he's moving over there.
Hi there.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
I'm Elizabeth Baker.
I'll wanna lower that a little bit.
It is kinda up there, isn't it? I'm Elizabeth Baker. I live on Augustine Drive. I realize that Mr. Johnston sometimes comes off a little crass here, but I have to say, I was there in September. I saw there was poop and toilet paper and sewage coming up in the streets. I saw it with my own two eyes. I smelled it. I saw it. It happened. Now, we're to the right to clean water. Orange County was completely different than this. Completely different. It was totally rewritten. That was the rights of nature. This is the right of the people to clean water and to hold polluters accountable, as we absolutely should. I have nothing but respect for every single person up here. But the message that's being sent to the people is that somehow you're trying to protect the city from the people, and your job is to represent us. It's not to make decisions for us, it's to make decisions with us. And when eighty-two percent of the residents of this city told you that they believe that they absolutely have a right, and I believe that we have a God-given right, to clean water, do what's right. Be on the right side of history on this, guys. You don't want to be on the other side.
Thank you. Next, I was like quasi-judicial, my bad. Next up in petitions and requests. Okay, moving on to the next thing, I think, sir.
Okay, on to consent agenda item. City Council, do you have any questions for consent agenda items eight A through eight J of staff?
I see none.
City Council, do you have any agenda items that you'd like to pull for further discussion of consent agenda items eight A through eight J?
I see none.
City Clerk, do you have any cards for consent agenda?
Yes, sir, two cards.
Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Please, thank you.
Consent agenda item eight A, approved resolution number fifteen twenty-two-three and subordinate agreement between FDOT and the city of Titusville. Consent agenda item eight B, approve the award for engineering services for Sisson Road Force Main improvements. Consent agenda item eight C, approve purchase order increase for FY twenty-twenty-three to the contract with Robinson Bush Consulting for Human Resources Employee Benefits. Consent agenda item eight D, approve the use of the Brevard Contract with Tech Systems Incorporated for roof replacements at one-one-three-five Knox McCray Drive. Consent agenda item eight E, approve the use of Almanac Contract with Terra Building Solutions for the replacement of components of the HVAC system in the Fire Department Headquarters. Consent agenda item eight F, approve the increase in hourly rate for legal fees for Attorney Jeff Mandell and firm for Fisher and Phillips Effective one October twenty-two-three. Consent agenda item eight G, approve the award of the contract to Jim's Complete Construction for General Contracting Services. Consent agenda item eight H, accept the Clean Vessel Act grant. Consent agenda item eight I, approve the Police Department Transition to T-Mobile for all cellular services to include cell phones and laptop air cards. Consent agenda item eight J, approve the designation of Paul Gugelman Esquire as special magistrate.
All right. Council on the comments before I go to cards. I see none. Cards, please.
Yes, sir. We have three cards now. First, Tony Shifolo.
Tony Shifolo, Titusville. I want to speak to item F, increase in hourly rate for legal fees for Attorney Jeffrey Mandell from two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars an hour to three-hundred-and-ten dollars an hour. It's pretty, pretty standard rates for attorneys, I think, anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-and-fifty, depending on what the seriousness is. I have no idea what Jeffrey Mandell and the firm of Fisher and Phillips does for our city. I don't know what Broome does for us either particularly, except cost us a lot of money. In May of twenty-twenty-one, a group of citizens got together and had started some action on getting some kind of response to cleaning up the Indian River Lagoon. And it was pointed out to us that it would be necessary really to go ahead and incorporate as a nonprofit, so we could do this legally and maybe get some kind of action. And the action that was decided upon was to try and get an amendment to the city charter. Well, that incorporation and stuff cost us, you know, a couple hundred dollars in renting a post office box and getting the petitions and stuff. All of that was done pretty much in kind. People used their home printers, and we got a couple of printing companies. And Ms. Nelson, I'm gonna need to speak with you because our thing has nothing to do with Orange County, but I wanted to talk about attorney fees and legal fees, because I want you to realize that, like I say, I don't know what is going on with this Fisher and Phillips and what they do for you, but I do know what the actions of the city have done to citizens like myself who happen to be involved with Speak Up Titusville, and find that I'm now going to be fiscally responsible because it is a corporation and stuff. And I know that to date, we've spent over twenty-five thousand dollars on attorney fees defending the eighty-two percent of the population that voted for the right to clean water. It's cost us over twenty-five thousand dollars in charged legal fees. We have an attorney who's working with us pro bono also, and I'm certain that her fees would be at least that amount, probably more, because she's doing a lot of work to make sure that our petition was not the same as Orange County, not giving rights to nature, but giving people the rights to a clean environment. So, I don't know what Fisher and them are charging you, but I just wanted you to be aware that it's, you're costing us, me, out of both pockets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next card, please.
Stan Johnston, items B and J.
B and J? B and J. Help me out now.
Stan Johnston, registered professional engineer, and for about forty-seven years, and graduated in honorary society and so forth. And I was even employed at the city of Titusville, retired from the city of Titusville, at the top of the payroll. Couldn't even, when they came for raises, they couldn't give me any more money, so they passed me over. But now, you guys don't listen to me. Fact is, you don't even want me to tell the truth. Fact is, I was just, just a little while ago, I was telling the truth about your city manager.
I'm good. I'm good.
And this has to do with eight B. Well, it may also have to do with eight-
J?
Eight J, because the guy, he really wants more money. He wants two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars an hour, and he wants a hundred-and-eighty-three dollars an hour traveling fee, a hundred-and-eighty-three dollars traveling fee. And I guess maybe, I'm not sure, maybe when he goes to the restroom, maybe he wants the fee for that, too. But I think that's, it's, the city's spending more money than they should be, because the city should be spending money. I mean, like, I'm a witness, and you don't want me to testify. I've got photos, videos, and so forth of what the city's doing illegally, and you want to shut me up. That's what people should be hearing, that you want to shut me up because I've got evidence against this guy. And the thing is, is that, not only that, is I'm told, I'm told to sit down because I'm just telling the truth. You see, he's not, he's not, it's unbelievable what's going on here. So, regarding the Force Main, is that this is done, again, by the Water Resources Department. The Water Resources Department, they know. I mean, what we had is, we had during this sewage spill, we had numerous employees go down there because they had to repair, two repairs. One was a water leak, and one was the sewage main. And fact is, you go to the manhole right now, it says twenty-twenty-two on it, because they replaced the manhole lid at least, and probably the manhole, where we had a big, we had a basin of sewage that was photographed. It was photographed, and it's in the newspaper, too. That was in the newspaper. So, when I come to City Hall and complain about this, and I want y'all to recognize this sewage spill, y'all say, sit down, take your seat. That's what the mayor says. Sit down. That's horrible. I think that's horrible. And it's what it is. This is a felony, what he's done. It's false report. And like I said, is we got this, this boy, he's been paralyzed from allegedly from a sewage spill. This is my business. And I said right now, is you can't get a professional engineer to disagree with me, because I'll send him to the board. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's the last card?
No, sir.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. One additional card, Christopher Hilton, item eight F.
Eight F. I like F.
Christopher Hilton, thirty-one hundred Demerit Drive, on topic number F, increase the hourly rate. I have a couple of questions. One would be, what is this change in the dollar amount? I don't see that's being presented. I don't see that being presented. And, um, the second would be, what, what are we retaining these lawyers for, or the mid-case? Is this why we are keeping them on the rates going up?
City manager, we got, or-
Do you want me to answer? I'd be glad to answer.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The write-up says that it will increase from two-ninety-five to three-oh-five, which is ten dollars, effective in October. Mr. Mandell and his firm have been assisting the city for more than twenty years with only labor issues. He's only used on as-needed basis for certain grievances or union negotiations as needed.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, thank you. Last card? Okay. Um, give me, um, any comment or motion, Member Nelson?
Move to approve consent agenda items A through J.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Member Nelson, a second by Member Cole, roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously, city manager.
On to item nine A, and, uh, there's quasi, so the city chairman will read quasi procedures along with the three ordinances that are upcoming.
Vice Mayor Robinson, did you accidentally push your button?
This item is an annexation and small-scale comprehensive plan amendment with the rezoning, uh, which is SSA number eleven twenty twenty-two. With regard to the rezoning, I'm going to read the quasi judicial proceedings. During the public hearing portion of this meeting, anyone wishing to speak on this quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council, sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, full truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
For staff and the applicant, of all witnesses that intend to speak, sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, full truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on this quasi judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, has the agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of the hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi judicial item, said visit or opinions shall be disclosed. If written ex parte communications exist, we'll make sure the applicant has received them and has had an opportunity to review those and is ready to proceed.
Counsel, anybody get a email or anything like that? No.
No, I've had people offer to go over the plan with me, but that, that did not happen.
I've had, uh, contact with the, a presentation probably back in December timeframe with the presentation of what was coming up.
Who, who was that with?
That was with Robin and the developer.
Could you describe what was discussed and whether you've formed any opinions based on that presentation?
I did not.
What was the present, what was the discussion?
The presentation was the luxury apartments and, that were going in on Dairy Road, just a presentation of what was happening.
Member Stokel?
No.
I believe, I could be wrong. Ms. St. Ange, didn't you send an email? That's what I thought. And I don't think, I didn't think I was the only one that got it, was I?
No, I sent you the email.
That's what I thought. No, I'm surprised, okay. I will say that I got an email from Ms. St. Ange, um, and she gave me some concerns. I believe that's the only thing I got. If I'm, if I'm missing one, it's because I'm not remembering it, but, uh, Ms. St. Ange gave me, like I said, sent me an email, she had concerns about the, the project and, uh, the land use. So that's, that's what I had.
What were those concerns and do we have a, the copy of the email?
Yeah, 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 I, I'm sure it's on my computer, I didn't run a copy of it. But anyway, I haven't done that before. But, um, she had some concerns about some trees and some things like that. Um, Ms. St. Ange, what else? But yeah, just the, the basic concerns about, uh, you know, development and, uh, what it'd do, uh, with the trees and, uh, that area.
Did you form, did you form any opinions on this project based upon the email regarding trees from?
No, no, I mean, you know, I, I certainly took in her concerns and, uh, yeah, and I think that, uh, that's kind of a universal concern when these things go that direction, so I get it. But no, I'm, I'm good. I could swear, but I got that. Anyway, I got it. So that's it.
Yeah, just for record, city manager will attempt to get a copy of that and provide it to the applicant while we're here.
Okay, do I, I mean, can you, you just gotta pull that up? Yeah, I'm curious too, who all got it?
At this time, again, this, this item includes three items, the annexation, a land use, and a zoning change. And I'm going to read all three ordinances at this time. When we do vote on them, you'll vote on them separately then, but we will open the public hearing on these items, so when individuals come to speak and certainly address the annexation, the land use, and the zoning. Ordinance number twenty-four twenty-two-three, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida amending section seven, chapter sixty-three, two thousand and one, laws of Florida, special acts of nineteen sixty-three, by annexing certain property located west of North U.S. Highway One, having parcel ID number twenty-one thirty-five twenty-nine zero-zero-eight, to be included within the city limits and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number twenty-five twenty-three, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty-dash-nineteen-eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville, by amending the future land use designation for approximately fifteen-point-zero-eight acres of land located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Dairy Road and North U.S. Highway One with parcel ID numbers twenty-one thirty-five twenty-nine zero-zero-eight and twenty-one thirty-five twenty-nine zero-zero-thirty-five, from the neighborhood commercial Brevard County's own land use and commercial low-intensity future land use designation to the medium-density residential future land use designation, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number twenty-six twenty-three, an ordinance, amending ordinance number five nineteen ninety-three and twenty-nine dash twenty-sixteen of the city of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification of approximately fifteen-point-zero-eight acres of land located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Dairy Road and North U.S. Highway One with parcel ID number twenty-one thirty-five twenty-nine zero-zero-eight and twenty-one dash thirty-five twenty-nine zero-zero-thirty-five, to the agricultural, residential, Brevard County, and community commercial zoning districts to the planned development zoning district, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Are we good?
This is annexation and small-scale comprehensive plan amendment SSA number eleven twenty-two, rezone of Dairy Road Luxury Apartments. This is the public hearing in second reading. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency, held a public meeting, uh, on seventeen May twenty twenty-three. The motion for annexation was approved seven-zero. The motion to, um, recommend approval of the comprehensive future land use use, map-changing the future land use designation, was approved six-one, with Miss, Member Fason voting no because he wanted to encourage more affordable housing. The motion to recommend approval of the rezone map by changing community commercial zoning district to planned development zoning was approved five-two, with Member Fason voting no because he wanted to encourage affordable housing, and Member Rogers voting no because he could not feel comfortable with the recreation paths and sets setbacks. Mr. Parrish is here to give you a quick, quick presentation prior to the applicant.
So, Mr. Mayor, my counsel, the staff report begins on page three-three-six of your packet. I'm just going to summarize the staff report, but I am going to flip to another couple of pages in your packet so you can see exactly what I'm describing here. So this is a fifteen-acre piece of property, but about a third of it is actually inside the county. It's got, uh, different county land use, comprehensive plan land use, and different, uh, comprehensive plan zoning, whereas two-thirds of the property is located, or the subject area of this property is located inside the city boundaries, and it has a, uh, commercial land use and a community commercial zoning on it. So what's being requested here is to annex just that one-third into the city, and then that, that's a legislative decision as described before to you earlier. Um, we reviewed it, we believe it's consistent with the state statute as far as making sure it's not going to create an enclave or create any other issue. The next, uh, decision then is to replace the county land use on that annexed piece of property, if approved, and replace the city's commercial land use on the incorporated portion of the property with a multifamily or high-density land use. Or, excuse me, a medium-density residential land use, which has a maximum residential density of ten units per acre. And then if that is approved, then the, uh, third action, which is the quasi judicial portion of this whole public hearing process, is the rezoning, and the applicant has suggested, has proposed going through the city's planned development rezoning process, which requires a master plan and a tailor-made zoning district on this property. And so they, they've proposed a master plan that we believe is consistent relatively with the criteria of the PD zoning standards and the city's code. We do have some suggestions on how to improve it for more, better compliance with the PD requirements and the master plan requirements, and those are conditions of the PD ordinance, which I'll describe briefly, um, later on in this presentation. So this is part, this includes the first actions that is making action on that voluntary annexation. That's a, a state statute process that the applicant is going through. They've submitted an application to annex a third of this property into the city. Uh, the next part is the land use and then the rezoning. This property, the, the subject property that's part of the annexation is actually at twenty-six oh-five Donna Drive, and there's actually an existing single-family home on there. If this is annexed and this approval, uh, land uses and rezoning is, is approved, then they'll have to go through a site plan process with the city. This won't require a sketch plan, so this will not come back to you again. Uh, once this annexation, land use, and rezoning, if approved, uh, their next step is to submit a site plan to us, and that's basically some engineered drawings, uh, to get eventually their site development permit to go forward with actual clearing and construction. Um, so their plan will have to be, their site plan will have to be relatively consistent with the conditions described in the PD rezoning ordinance and with the master plan that's attached to that ordinance. The, I'll describe later how those conditions in there allow them some flexibility of moving buildings around and parking lots around and so, so on, just based on site conditions. So at this stage, you do not have a, an engineered plan. You don't, we didn't get to that level of detail, so this is more conceptual in order to meet the requirements of a master plan submitted with a PD rezoning. The PD ordinance submitted as part of the application limits uses on the property to a hundred-and-thirty-eight apartment units. Uh, that's just under the ten-unit-per-acre threshold. Um, they are proposing one and, and two and three-bedroom units. They're also, uh, have associated parking areas, surface parking areas, uh, dog park, pool, clubhouse, recreational trails and amenities, and accessory structures are limited to private swimming pools, spaces including screen enclosures, detached accessory structures and home-based businesses as permitted by the city's code. Open space, including tree and wetland preservation areas, exceed the fifty percent of the total area. The minimum in the PD rezoning is thirty-five percent. So you can see on page three thirty-seven of your packet, you'll see the property currently, the vacant wooded area has, is inside the city, it's commercial low-intensity future land use category according to the city's comprehensive plan, and the zoning on it is community commercial. And then the single-family residence that's on the unincorporated portion of this property has agricultural residential Brevard County, uh, comprehensive plan land use designation and agricultural residential Brevard County zoning designation. All of that will change to medium-density residential with a max potential of a hundred-and-fifty residential units, and then a planned development zoning with master plan, and per, per the plan, it'll be maxed to a hundred-and-thirty-eight residential units with several apartment buildings. The surrounding uses and land uses and, and zoning on the, around this property is primarily the unincorpor, the incorporated part of the property is on the south side. Remember, there was the cottages project that was submitted to you, um, and processed for a land use decision on the, the southwest corner of Dairy Road and U.S. One. That part is inside the city. North of this property, west of this property, and east of this property is inside, uh, Brevard County. So I'm going to skip now to the page three fifty-three of your packet, and that's the last, second to last page of the staff report. I'm just going to describe the findings and our recommendation. We believe that the annexation, as proposed, is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and chapter one seventy-one of the Florida statutes. The comprehensive plan, future land use, small-scale map amendment is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The rezoning and conditions of approval is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the land development regulations, including PD and rezoning criteria described in section thirty-three dash eight and thirty-three dash forty of the city's code. The master plan is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, land development regulations, and master plan requirements described in chapters thirty-four, article two, division three of the code, with caveats as I will describe in the conditions of the PD ordinance. So the annexation, uh, we believe is consistent with chapter one seventy-one. Um, again, it's your decision, it's a legislative decision. The next step, finding for the comprehensive plan, again, that's primarily a legislative decision as to whether you believe replacing the commercial land use on this property with a residential land use is appropriate. We didn't, couldn't find anything that really jumps out in the simple city's comprehensive plan to, to say that this is inconsistent. But again, you may decide that the, uh, losing this commercial land use property is probably not appropriate considering where it's located. If the annexation and land use decisions are made consistent with what the applicant is proposing, then your next decision is the quasi judicial process, and that's the rezoning. And we believe that if the annexation and the comprehensive plan land use categories are approved, then the rezoning and PD, PD rezoning ordinance and with conditions and the master plan will be consistent with said comprehensive plan amendment. Our recommendation, uh, staff's recommendation is to approve the annexation of the three-and-a-half-acre piece of property as proposed. Our recommendation also is to approve the comprehensive plan, future land use, small-scale map amendment, and the Brevard County comprehensive plan agricultural land use, and the city's commercial high-intensity land use to the, uh, medium-density residential. As far as the rezoning, staff's recommendation is to approve the rezoning from the, to the planned development zoning district with master plan and conditions on the overall fifteen-acre property, including the property that will be annexed, with, uh, as described in the rezoning ordinance, including all conditions proposed by staff. I'm just going to summarize those conditions here. The conditions of approval include a maximum of one-hundred-and-thirty-eight residential units, a minimum of square, six-hundred square feet per unit. Buildings and all structures shall be no greater than forty-five feet in height per the master plan. A recreational plan shall be submitted for the site plan that illustrates a significant increase in recreational amenities in the open space areas, including a multi-use path with exercise stations, bicycle shelter, picnic areas with benches, grills, and gazebos. We've illustrated, we stated that inside, as a condition of approval of the rezoning, and we're, staff is, uh, agreeable to, to allow that discussion, the applicant to propose that enhanced recreational amenities during the site plan stage. However, you may disagree with that and may ask for those kind of amenities at this stage. Additional conditions address the potential of potable water for irrigation purposes and the use of low-impact development techniques to meet stormwater requirements, so that's being encouraged as a condition. Further conditions limit the number of driveways and their location. Finally, a condition of approval related to protection or mitigation of cultural resources is also included. So that, I'm going to skip to page three sixty-nine of your packet, and you'll see You'll see the property on the, the parcel to the, on the north side, that's the parcel that is three-and-a-half acres that's inside the unincorporated Brevard County and not in the city. And then the larger parcel is the parcel that's inside the city. All of it is wooded, and the applicant is proposing to preserve half of that. I do want to point out, though, on the south, or the just west- I do want to point out, though, on the south, on the just west of this property is the LaGrange Cemetery and Church. That property is on the National Register, and that will become important when I point out the conditions later. On the next page, on page 370 of your packet, you'll see the, again, the property in the county, and then the property in the city, which has a commercial low-intensity land use category. If I've said it's any other category, I'm mistaken. It is a commercial low-intensity on this property. The next page, on page 371, you'll see the same property with the property, the parcel that's inside the city and the parcel that's, I'm sorry, outside the city that's going to be annexed, and the parcel that's inside the city has the CC. That label means community commercial zoning. So all of that were replaced, if approved, with the PD zoning ordinance and this master plan. The next thing I want to point you to is page 377 of your packet, and this is the master I'll just briefly describe what you see here. If this is, all of this is approved, we receive a site plan that is much more in-depth than what you see here. This is just the first stage, so whenever they give us the site plan, it'll have to be relatively consistent with what you see here on this master plan on page 377 of your You'll see that they're not proposing a driveway over to US-1. On the east side of this property is the Coast-to-Cost Trail. We're recommending a condition that they not propose a driveway over that trail. They are proposing two driveways here, as illustrated on the master plan. We are suggesting that they be limited to one because that's what the code limits them to, and so if they ask for a second driveway, that can be dealt with during the site plan process and through our administrative process if necessary. You'll see the location of several apartment buildings with a height, again, of up to 45 feet. We believe they're relatively consistent with the buffer requirements, although there are a couple of areas where they will have to address either waivers or variances during the site plan development process. And then on the portion of the property that they are proposing to annex, you'll see there's a large stormwater pond. That's why they want to annex that piece of property, according to this plan. To the northwest corner of that stormwater pond, you'll see an existing driveway or dirt driveway. That'll have to be addressed during the site plan stage in order to address any buffer requirements there. Another corner, just on the west side of this property, you'll see the apartment building that's the furthest west on this master plan. On that corner portion of that property, just north of it there, like I said earlier, this property is adjacent to the LaGrange Church and Cemetery, which is on the National Register. We have evidence that was provided to us by the applicant that some portions of the cemetery spill out onto their property. The applicant is proposing to deed a portion of their property to the cemetery. They've also submitted to us a letter stating that the cemetery owners have no objection to this rezoning. Now, I will go back to the conditions that we're proposing in the PD ordinance, and that starts on page 363 of your packet. So according to our code, when an applicant proposes a master plan or a PD rezoning, there's a certain format that it has to follow, and that's what this follows. So these conditions you see here will be tailor-made for this particular property as a zoning district. So we have the legal description for the property, and then on the next page, you'll have certain description of the property, permitted uses. I'm on now page 364 of the packet. Permitted accessory uses, the density maximum stated here again, 138 residential units. There's a statement here about critical design features. These include preservation of wetlands, maintaining required landscape yards, buffers. It also says under B, the best plan includes clubhouses, a pool, a dog park, and tot lot. A recreational plan shall be submitted with a site plan that illustrates a significant increase in recreational amenities in the open space. This is staff's proposed language, and we've included three sub-paragraphs here. One, a multi-use path consistent with the technical manual will be proposed, a bicycle shelter that accommodates all required bicycle spaces, and a minimum of three picnic areas with benches, grills, and gazebos. Under paragraph C, the site plan will propose the preservation of existing large canopy trees or clusters of canopy trees, including areas of upland scrub pine and oaks to be incorporated into common areas to provide shade in common areas and where multi-use paths are located. That allows us to work with the applicant to preserve large canopy areas if possible and to adjust the buildings and parking lots. Now, the condition we're encouraging low-impact development as part of this development. And in E, the construction of all recreational amenities are required to be completed prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy. On the next paragraph, next section here, 1.7, you see the land use allocation table and how the open space and areas that will be developed will be allocated. The next section, 1.8, I'm now on page 365 of your packet. This has, this is kind of standard, development standards you see in our other zoning districts is being carried over to this property, consistent with the master plan. It's the area, it's called area height, bulk, and open space requirements. You'll see a maximum height of 45 feet, minimum living area of 600 feet for each unit, building, maximum building coverage 25%. So these are carried over from the master plan. And then G, paragraph G, it says, "If the PD ordinance does not address a specific standard, the standards of the multifamily medium-density R2 zoning district shall apply." So that's kind of a catch-all if anything's missing here. The next one on page, on that same page, 365, I'm on Section 1.9, roadway design. "A maximum of a one vehicular access driveway may be granted onto Dairy Road unless a waiver is approved consistent with the code." So that allows us to work with the applicant on that if they desire to have a second access point to go through that administrative process. We're prohibiting that US, an access driveway onto US-1 that would have to cross the Coast-to-Cost Trail, and that's to prohibit various driveways over time going over that bicycle trail. We've included a condition here that the state, that the location of parking areas, number of spaces, and design specifications on the master plan are for illustrative purposes only and shall be, not be utilized to implement the site plan. So that allows the applicant to work with us to either reduce the size of parking spaces, reduce the number of spaces, and their location, and work with us in addition to, that would help us work with them in conjunction with finding areas to preserve canopy as well. I'm going to skip to the very last condition, and that's on page 367 of your packet. So based on the evidence that we received about the headstones spilling onto this property, we recommend that they, that the applicant get what's called a certificate to dig that is actually stated in our code in the historic preservation overlay. We're recommending that that should be required with the approval of a site development permit consistent with the city's code. So in other words, we're recommending they go through what's called a certificate of appropriateness process, and that's consistent with any other property that's on the local register and having to go through a process to get approval either by the historic preservation board or by the local, or historic preservation officer on a staff level. I suspect what's really going to happen if this condition is approved, that when they go forward with their site plan, that we would ask them to go through this process to get this certificate of dig, they submit this application, and it'd be reviewed by our historic preservation officer. And I suspect their condition is going to be that if you go through construction and you find evidence of historical markers or historic resources on the property, such as cemetery or graveyards or gravesites, that you stop work and then go through the process to make sure that those are mitigated or protected in some way. That's consistent with what we saw with the state initially issued in a letter to us, to the applicant, and that the applicant shared with us. This process is completely separate from the state's process. So we believe that will allow them to go forward with the site plan. We recommend to the applicant to try and resolve this and maybe do what's called a cultural resource survey upfront during the public hearing process to kind of answer all those questions of whether there is an issue or not at this stage. But staff feels comfortable with a condition like this to allow them to go through that process with the historic preservation board or with our historic preservation officer at that administrative level right before site plan, so that we can work with them There are several other items in the packet, including a concurrency review that the staff did, elevations the applicant provided, but I won't go into that. I know the applicant does have a presentation they would like to give you as well. With that, I'll try and answer any questions you have about this.
First, let me say, Brad, that was excellent job of walking us through that step-by-step, and there were a lot of steps to go. I appreciate that. I certainly better understand the overall steps needed in the project, so I just really wanted to say thank you. That was pretty awesome. Counsel, anybody have any questions before we go to the next step? Member Stokoe?
Yes, that was a lot and very thorough. I guess my main question would be, considering all these conditions, are there any issues with the applicant agreeing to these conditions? What does that look like?
I did receive an email from the applicant asking for us to reconsider the condition. We revised the condition several times to make it bring it down to its essence that you see here. Specifically, what I'm referring to is this historic preservation condition. Staff's position is that we would recommend approval of this based on that condition. Without that condition, we could not support this.
Any other counsel questions? All right, I can go to the applicant. Applicants, applicant, applicants, I'm good either way. Okay, we need to pull up that PowerPoint.
Sir, Mayor, before we proceed, could I just confirm to the applicant that you, your group received a copy of the email that was referenced by the mayor earlier under the ex parte discussion?
I gave it to you, I gave it to you.
Right. Can I just confirm that you received it, and you've had a chance to review it? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm John Marling, 6354 Masters Boulevard, Orlando, Florida, 32819. I'm chairman of Investors Realty and co-sponsor of the Dairy Road Luxury Apartment, proposed luxury apartment, I should say, development, and along with my wife Heidi Marling, who's president of Investors Realty and also co-owner of the management company and Village Partners. So she does most of the work.
There you go.
You know, we came to Florida in 1982 out of Chicago. We have been going back and forth quite a bit, and we incorporated Investors Realty in 1984. And in the last 28 years, we've been doing mostly residential communities, some condominiums, mostly apartments in the last 20 years. And during that time, we've been building in central Florida and up in the panhandle about 6,000 units, but we're really proud of three of our last four were cited by the Tampa Bay Times and the Lake Leger and the Best of the Best voted, and that made us very happy because you work really hard and never know what's going to happen, but you know, they've worked out really well. Turning to this project, we're really excited about the possibility. It's really complex with Susan and Bruce, and we've counted every single tree and surveyed and surveyed, and Brad's and Eddie have done a wonderful job. We're going to have to move things around a little bit. We do have a couple areas of minor disagreement with the graves. They're not all over the site. There's an eight-inch encroachment, I think a 10-inch encroachment, and when they were laying it out, they just didn't know the border. But these were the new graves. The older graves are further west, and we've met with Mr. Ferguson on that, and he, you know, supports the development. And I think, I don't, I don't mind doing digs. What I mind is wasting money. It is a real tough market right now. I think a cultural dig, oh, you get up around $20,000, and who knows what happens after that, but I think that we'll work with staff and do whatever is required. We've back and forth with the state, they call it SHIBO, I guess, State Housing, you know, Preservation Authority, and we'll do what's required. I did want to mention on the height, I said to, I think it's Ted Goddard in P&amp;Z, because he just wanted 45 feet period, so he didn't want to use the code, which says you can go to the mean height of the roof, which would have given us 50 feet, but 45 feet, I told him was okay. I forgot and was corrected later by the architect on one building, our building number C, which is the amenity building, which is lower than the other buildings in terms of you go down a little hill. It's really, we need an extra foot and 10 inches without changing the roof design because of the higher clearances required in the amenity building. So that's one other thing. And before, we just have a fabulous team representative. These guys are, well, I shouldn't say guys, landscaping, Bruce Moya, Jim McKnight, James Taylor with Kimberly Horn with Traffic, they're all here tonight, and they'll do a much better job of explaining things than me. But the one last item, I think on the two entrances, it's been our experience, we only have 138 units, and so it says only one. The reason we want two is we can get the garbage trucks in and out and into the compactor and not have them weave through the entire development. That's one reason. The second reason is on any emergency case, you might have everybody coming towards one entrance, so you want that emergency second entrance if you can. And so that's it. Jim, you want to take it from here?
Your name for the record, sir.
Let me make sure I don't mess this up.
Just want to make sure we get it out there.
I'm Jim McKnight. I am the principal planner on this project, and I did want to say one thing upfront. I spent 42 years in local government in Brevard County, 36 as a city manager, and I'm glad I'm retired. I've been to your last two meetings, and it just confirmed why I retired.
Stan?
Anyway, I'm going to go over some things very quickly with you. Brad has given a great outline of everything in there, and I don't want to be redundant. You guys have been here long enough tonight. But I would like to go over just a couple of things that are very important. He pointed out the land use being community commercial, okay, both pieces. That's the annexed piece and the one in the city. The zoning is community commercial and ag-residential on the piece to be annexed. We are requesting medium-density residential. It's coming out at about 9.15 units per acre. I'm working on six other projects in the county right now, and every one of them are 20-plus. This is one of the lowest density I've ever seen, which I like. I like to see a little lower density. I think that's good. It's actually a downgrading of zoning from commercial to residential. It's significant in that we're creating basically a step-down in zoning to the single-family that exists to the north and west. I think one of the things that is important is that we know once a planned development zoning is approved, substantial changes would be required to return to the mayor and council. Is that correct, Brad? Okay. We just, we don't intend to make any, but we know that is a requirement if we did make any substantial change. Hopefully, we have, this plan has been worked and reworked and should be in pretty good shape. The, this goes over the three things we're asking for. Again, Brad reiterated those, the annexation, the small-scale comprehensive plan amendment because it's under 50 acres, and the rezoning to PD. Again, he gave you the location maps, but as we can see, it's located at the corner of US-1 and Dairy Road adjacent to the bike trail. It's 1,300 feet of frontage, which is significant. One of the things I will tell you, and I'll just go ahead and do that now, with regard to two driveways, as a former city manager, that was one thing we pushed was multiple driveways when you had significant frontage because it works better for trash pickup, it works better for fire. We actually had an incident where an entrance that only had one got blocked, and then we had an EMS call. We got them in there, but it wasn't pretty getting them in there. So having a second entrance is good for police, fire, trash pick- entrance is good for police, fire, trash pickup, and another, a lot of those things. So we will be requesting that we get a waiver to have two entrances, as is shown on the plan. It's nothing new. It's what we've shown on along. Moving on, this shows you the zoning map. Again, you've already seen that, so I'll let the public look at it for a second. The site plan, again, 138 units, four two-story buildings and three three-story buildings. Where he talked about the height being the 46 feet and 10 inches, that building is the southeast building. It is the furthest away from the residential, and again, it also has a grade change going down. So effectively, you really don't have, but measuring from grade, it would be to the top. But normally, the measurement for height is the mean height of the roof between the eve and the top of the roof or the point of the roof. We are going to have EV charging stations in there, too. We know that's a thing that people like to see nowadays, and it's only going to become more. It's only going to become more. So we're going to go ahead and start with it already being in there and probably set it up where it can, I actually, in Cocoa Beach, we built a parking garage. We put in EV stations, but we set it up to be able to add more, and I think that's critical, too, as we know there'll be more electric cars as we move forward. Open space, Brad hit on that, over 50%, including preservation of our native vegetation and wetlands and our stormwater retention, and only 35% is required. There was a lot of discussion about recreation facilities, and again, we know that's something that will, actually, we have in the plan, but will be refined as we move through the site plan process. It's probably getting in a lot of detail at this point to say what's exactly going to be where. And at this point in time, I'm going to defer to our landscape architect to discuss the tree canopy, because we know you got an email, at least you did, Mayor, and we want her to be able to respond to that.
Thank you.
So I'm going to turn it over to Susan Hall at this point.
Good evening.
It feels good to stand up.
I'll tell you later.
My name is Susan Hall. I'm a landscape architect. I have resided and practiced on Merritt Island for the last 25 years, and I am delighted to be part of this project. So I, as the landscape architect for this project, I asked to be able to speak this evening about our site. At the onset of rewriting the tree canopy preservation code, we participated in many of the meetings. We ran some test samples with some of our projects using the proposed code to see how that worked out, and we did that for Mary Spar and some members of the committee. And another thing that we did was we listened a lot, and what we heard was that the committee that was putting this rewrite together not only wanted more and more valuable and more quality tree canopy preservation, but, and not only did they want it on the buffers, which is written into the code that way, they also wanted to see canopy preservation integrated into the site design of site plans and to make efforts to do that, and I believe we have done that here. The minimum threshold for canopy preservation is 10%, but through the efforts of a hard work and design team, we came up to just under 28%, and I do believe that we will actually get to the 28, I mean, we were at 27.7%, and I do believe we'll get up to 28%, which is, you know, greatly in excess of the 10% minimum. And it's a beautiful piece of property. At the very beginning of our work, the engineers and I walked the property twice, and we went through probably, I would say, eight to 10 site plan iterations before we settled on where we are today, all in an effort to work through and preserve as much canopy as we could. So we'll continue to massage the plans as we move forward to avoid impacts on the critical root zones in all cases of the areas and the trees to be preserved. The slope, or the site slopes from west downward to the east, and the project will follow that grade. So that makes it a little more, makes it easier to accomplish more preservation as we've done. So we're thankful to the Marlings for embracing our team's efforts and hope that this development can set an example of how developers, engineers, architects, and landscape architects can work together to meet all of our combined code requirements, and there are a bundle of them, and to also come out with a win-win situation. So after hearing from Kay Saint-Ange and her review of our preliminary plan that was submitted, which, thank you, Kay, I do appreciate that, she brought up some specific tree locations that she was asking about, and so last week, we made a third visit to the site. So the trees that Kay had asked about were number 677, 852, 968, and 981. So I'd like to respond and kind of walk you through that. Fortunately, the mosquitoes were not successful in carrying us off last Friday, but boy, did they try. There were a lot of them out there. So let's start with tree number 852, and there's a photograph of, several photographs of this tree in your packet. So technically, this tree, it's a 60-inch oak cluster, and it is a laurel oak. They are not as long-lived as the live oaks. And technically, it meets the definition of a heritage tree, because combined, the trunks are greater than, or 46 inches or greater. The tree is not in great condition. I would have to say it is definitely in decline. You can see the second, the middle photograph, looking up the trunk of a tree, of one of the trunks, where you see a lot of decay and no foliage. And the far-right image shows the base of the tree, where we have some separation at the base of the trunk. So we have, we will be shifting Building 1A slightly to the west so that we are clearly outside of the roots, the critical root zone of this heritage tree and all the other individual large trees that are out throughout the site. None of the critical root zones will be affected. The grades won't be changed, and there won't be any construction within those root zones. But this tree in particular, we'll work with a local certified arborist to see how to best manage the health of this tree as time goes on, because we really want to make sure that we have a safe situation below it and around it for future residents. The next tree is tree number 968, and this is a really nice and beautiful 36-inch hickory. It needs a little bit of selective pruning of dead wood, but for the most part, that's a great-looking tree. It's out in the middle of a green space, out in the middle of the site. You can see, well, it feels like the middle of the site. You can see in the top right where the tree is shown on the plan, and there are no interferences with the root zone on this tree. Tree number 981, did I miss a tree? Yeah, I did. 968, let me see, 968. 981. 981 is a laurel oak over on the west side of the property. It's in very poor condition. It is, it's unlikely that we will keep that tree, because I think we have a very unsafe situation with it. But again, we will work with an arborist to see how to best manage this situation. And if this tree was to be removed, it would most definitely be replaced. And then we have our last tree that Kay was asking about, and that is tree number 677. This is out in the middle of the site. You can see on the top right where it's identified on the site. It's out in the center of the amenity area, and this is a very nice-looking baltic trunk live oak. It measures 45 inches if you combine the trunks, so it's very close to being a heritage tree. Not quite, maybe an inch away. It won't take long. And while we were out in the field that day, we did notice that to the north of this tree, we have a couple of big hickories, a 36-inch, or sorry, a 30-inch and 32-inch, and we're going, we're planning to add those to our preservation as well, which adjusts the dog park, make it a little smaller, and rework some walkways. So, kind of as a side note, on this site, we have 19 large canopy trees that are 30 inches and larger diameter. And of, two of those are heritage trees, which we're keeping both, and of those 19 trees, 14 of them we are able to preserve. So I think that's a, you know, a pretty good, pretty good amount, considering that the site is being proposed to be developed. And the preservation areas that we ultimately end up with will have, we will put sufficient protective language on the approved site plan as a condition of approval, and this will be recorded in the property records that are maintained by the City of Titusville. So they will be protected in perpetuity. So my goal this evening was to really, was to illustrate to you how your new code can be and should be applied for a successful outcome. Not all sites will afford us this opportunity, but due to grade changes that may be required or the type of vegetation or trees or pines that are growing there, but this site did, and we took advantage of that. So I just wanted to say that I do think that we were able to accomplish what your new code set out to do. Thank you. I have two more slides. We prepared a couple of slides to show some site visibility angles from the adjacent properties to the west of the site. This first slide shows the site angle leading from the very northern, northwestern building, and that angle that you see there does not exceed 45 feet. That's the three-story building. And the homes that this building is closest to, it's only the end of the building that faces those homes, not the full length of the building. It's just the end. The second section that we're providing here is showing the two-story buildings that are located behind the single-family residences to the west of these buildings. So with that, thank you for your time, and I'll hand this on over to Bruce.
Thank you very much. That was awesome. Never seen it done that way before. I mean, that was cool.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Bruce Moya with MBV Engineering, Melbourne, Florida. Now you can see why we brought Susan on board.
I see that.
That was my first phone call to the applicant, was we need to get those trees looked at first. It was the first thing we did. It was, so the trees were a forethought, not an afterthought, so we knew how important that was. And then, as you can see, she did a great job, and we did make a lot of adjustments to get to this point because of that. So now we'll get into some boring engineering stuff, so I'll apologize in advance and hope not to bore you with a lot of useless details, but we thought there were some things that were just kind of important to address. Just some features of the site when it comes to grading and drainage. The site is located outside of the area of critical concern. We thought that was important for you to know that. It is obviously mostly undisturbed woods. The site does slope from an elevation of 40 at the west end to an elevation of 15 at the east end of US-1. It's a pretty significant drop. So that was a challenge in itself, especially when it comes to preserving trees. Fortunately, according to the soil survey, we have very, very good soils. They were considered moderate, rapid to very rapid percolating soils. So we have the two dry retention ponds that we feel adequately address stormwater, and as you know, if you are discharging to a state system, which we are, discharging to the state right away, we have to meet the 100-year storm event for every duration from one hour to three days. So it's way over and above what the city requires and what St. Thomas requires. So you're getting a really good stormwater system, especially considering with that existing slope, a lot of that runoff probably leaves the site, you know, totally untreated. So you're going to get a good stormwater system. And then we, it'll also be designed to rehydrate the existing wetlands on the site to make sure that they stay viable. Regarding utilities, we're proposing to connect to an existing 10-inch line that runs along Dairy Road, and we will internally loop that for fire protection and potable water for the property. We will construct our own private lift station that will pump to and connect to the 10-inch force main that runs along the north side of Dairy Road. We would connect to reclaim, but it does not exist in the area, so we will be doing an irrigation well. And being that it is outside the area of critical concern, we hope that that is not a problem. And the last thing I'd like to address is probably a little repetitive, and that's about the access points. We are proposing our main entrance on Dairy, which is the east entrance, and then the secondary entrance to the west. There is over 1,290 linear feet of frontage on Dairy Road. Our first entrance will be over 575 feet from US-1 and will be over 275 feet from the west property boundary, and they'll be over 500 feet apart. We feel that the site is, does not have, it does not have access onto US-1. There is a tract of land that's owned by the DEP that separates us from US-1. We cannot connect to it without getting an easement from the state. So we don't think it's considered a corner lot, and I know we're going to have conversations with your staff on that, because your code is pretty clear that you can only have, if you have a corner lot, you can only have one entrance on each street, but we don't feel that this is a corner lot, and the code says that we can have a maximum of two points of access on a collector's street, which is what Dairy Road is by code. And also, the secondary entrance is mostly for trash collection and emergency egress and access. If we eliminated that, we would have a 900-foot dead end, which is contrary to your code. So we're hoping that that second access is going to be approved. And that's really all I have, and if you have any questions, I'll hang out for a little while. So I'll hand it over to James for traffic.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good evening. James Taylor with Kimley Horn and Associates, traffic engineer for the project. I have just three slides, and we'll go through them quick. We talked a lot tonight, so I'll wrap and then be available for Q and A afterwards. So as part of the, as part of the application, a traffic impact analysis is required. We worked with your staff to develop a methodology before we even put pencil to paper to do that analysis, and we did that in accordance with the land development code. It requires a particular study area to be developed. The study area for this site is shown with the numbers there. There were three off-site intersections and then the two driveways that have been mentioned. Trip generation for the site is something that we go to our empirical data source, the ITE Handbook Institute of Transportation Engineers, and then we take those trips and we distributed them throughout the area in accordance with DOT's latest and greatest travel demand model that matches up trip pairs. And the analysis was really focused on two things. First, what is the impact of the comprehensive plan, future land use change on your map, and then also to look at operational conditions at these intersections and at the driveways to make sure that there's adequate capacity, that the turn lanes are in place that need to be in place. So starting with the comprehensive plan amendment and specific to the future land use, that zoning change from a commercial use was much more intense from perspective use, that, that zoning change from a commercial use was much more intense from perspective of traffic to a residential use. What we have on the left side of the screen here is what could be developed today under the existing future land use combined with those parcels. It's about a hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet of shopping center, actually a little bit more you could, you could put on the site. And then the daily trips is about ten thousand. The, the PM peak hour trips, which we focus on for these studies because that's the peak time when your commuters are on the road, is about nine hundred trips. And then on the right side of the screen, this is the maximum potential for that ten DUs per acre, future land use. It goes down by a factor of about ten for the daily and the PM peak hour trips, down to eighty-two trips. So the, the, the conclusion of that comprehensive plan, it would be a significant reduction to the maximum trip generation potential that you could have on the site with the existing zoning today. And then to further, you've heard your staff describe that we're not just stopping at the future land use, the ten DUs per acre. We're even going to a PD that only allows for about nine-point-five units per acre, a hundred-and-thirty-eight units. And when we do the trip generation estimate for that, we're, it's, it's looking like about eighty PM peak hour trips. That's fifty in, thirty out. And then none of those trips occur at the same place at the same, same time because some are going east, some are going west. So not a big trip generator because of the, the low number of units. For some perspective of what the traffic out there looks like today in the existing and what it looks like into the future, on Dairy Road, that roadway is operating with about fifty-eight percent of the capacity. In other words, if, if a hundred percent is where you've maxed out your two-lane capacity, you're at fifty-eight percent of that today. After the project build-out, that goes from fifty-eight percent to sixty-two percent. That's what that feels like. On US one, it's even less pronounced because that's obviously a bigger roadway with more traffic. It would go from forty-nine percent today to about fifty-one percent in the future. We also looked at the needs for deficiencies in the area that need to be mitigated, driveway turn lanes, and found none as a result of the project impact. And I'll hand it back to Jim now, but I'll be available for Q and A.
We'll wrap this up, promise. These are just some renderings of the clubhouse that will be to the easternmost portion of the property, south and east. Just some other looks. There will be two-story buildings with attached garages. We did hold our community engagement letter, uh, letter, meeting on February twenty-eighth this year. Wasn't real well attended. We had five residents, and they gave us some input on some things they thought were important. These are some previous projects of Mr. Marling. Just some interior designs and some of the awards they've received. One of the things that, that is important to us is, and it may be just a language issue, but on the historic preservation, we know there's the state requirement where we had a letter back in May that indicated, who was to our consultant on this, that gave us the outline of what we needed, but it didn't say anything about any new information or anything like that. We don't know what the new information is. Our request is on historic preservation is that the language say, we have to follow city code. Okay, we understand that. We have, and Brad, you can publicly flog me if you want to. We should not have deeded, we deeded a twelve-by-fifty strip to the La Grange Cemetery already. We should have waited until after this was done. Okay, so again, I'll take a public flogging over that. We should have waited.
Good intentions.
We have done that, and we have taken care of the three, actually only two of them were really encroaching, like eight and ten inches, but we've taken care of all of that. And we have even the plot plan of the graves here that shows, and most of the ones on the north and west are not even occupied at this time. There's still a lot of area to do that. And we consulted with Mr. Ferguson on that, and you have his letter. So we're requesting that the language not say cultural dig, but that it reflect that we'll follow the city processes as we go through the site plan process. Two other items that, that we are requesting, one is we are requesting, and I was unclear on this when Brad said at the site plan stage, but we are requesting the two driveways, the main entrance and the secondary driveway, and I gave you reasons for that earlier. And again, we wanted to be totally transparent by saying the one building, okay, measured by the city's code meets the forty-five foot or less. But we, at the peak, it is forty-six feet and ten inches. It is the most far removed building from any of the residences, and it also is on the downslope. So again, we wanted to make sure that was revealed here, and we didn't want to get caught up in a problem.
Right.
Over a foot and ten inches if we, if we can avoid it. So that's all we've got. Thank you for your time, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions before we go to cards?
Thank you.
Member Stokoe.
It may be more for staff or not, just a couple clarifying questions. I know you said the community meeting that you had was not well-attended. Do we send out notices within that five-hundred feet to people that live in the county as well, not just city?
That's correct.
Okay, so, okay.
Everybody, yeah.
Okay. Brad, regarding the second entrance, I feel like they seem, it was brought up in several of their plans. I feel like they seem pretty adamant on that. Can you just explain a little bit why you would prefer one entrance? Or like per code, not necessarily your opinion, but?
So what you can process here is a tailored maiden zoning district. So basically, you're coming up with a zoning district as far as development standards. But when it comes to design standards you see in chapter thirty of our code, that's not related to this. That's a site plan-related question, and that's an access management question that should be relegated to the site plan stage. So we do have a process, an administrative waiver process. Sometimes it requires going before our development review committee and allowing that technical review committee judge that request. So that's what we're suggesting here.
So to clarify, you just don't want to see it at this stage?
We don't think it's appropriate at this stage because we don't have a site plan.
Okay. Do you, as the applicant, do you feel okay with that?
We have to follow process.
Okay.
Understood.
Okay, so that one, good. One of my three things, it's done. The height, I know they said it's just on that clubhouse, a little less than two feet. Do you have issue with that?
So the height will be dealt with during the building permit stage. So after this, then a site plan, then Lex's building permits. And so they'll be dealing with the building official on that question. Our interpretation of how to propose, impose the height limitation in the city's zoning code is based on interpretation, the administrative interpretation that was made using the building code. So we'll look at the average of the parapet height basically to determine that at that stage. But that's not something that needs to be, that we can really answer at this point.
Okay, so it's a process.
We were being, we were just trying to be transparent that we.
No, I appreciate that.
Uh, member Gerard brought that up, Planning Board, and we just wanted to respond to that. And I agree that normally it is the mean average between the peak and the eve that is your maximum height.
Okay. I appreciated the tree canopy presentation. I feel like that was very in-depth and thorough, and appreciate you addressing citizen concerns. And then I guess my last thing is the historical part. I don't know if we are coming to an agreement on that. Is that going to be one that we're?
Sure. I refer you to page five seventy-five of your packet. And you'll see the letter that the applicant has submitted addressed to the Start Preservation Board. I did clarify with the applicant who they really wanted this to be sent to because we're not at that stage before the board. So they asked for it to be submitted to you, and that's why it's part of your packet. You'll see that the, on the next page, or page five seventy-seven, there's a survey there that they've identified a corner of their piece of property where they actually see some plots spilling onto their property. That was the information that was provided to the state. I just want to be clear that the communication the applicant has had with the state is completely separate from the communication we're having here or this discussion today because that is totally separate from the approval of this or review of this application you see before you tonight. What the, we received from the state was a letter. We received a copy of a letter from the applicant as part of their application here that they see the letter from the state stating that they went through what's called a Section one oh six process. And from what I understand, that was something that was required. It's a federal process that, because they're asking for a Fannie Mae loan or some kind of state, a federal loan, from what I understand. And it required some, having to go through this process. I, when I saw the letter in the application, I called the state and tell them why we were not, asked them why we were not part of the comment process because we're, if you recall, we're certified local government based, per the Department of Interior's program. And that allows us the ability to make comment on reviews that are going through a Section one oh six process. And so when I questioned about that, they confirmed to me that we should have been made, given an opportunity to comment. I then informed them that I had evidence from the applicant that there was a survey here, so you see here on page five seventy-seven of your packet. I provided that to the applicant. I then subsequent received on May thirtieth, a letter dated May thirtieth from the, from the state, which I believe either came, was sent to me by email from the state and sent to the applicant that stated they had revised letter to the applicant, asking for a cultural resource survey. This letter has nothing to do with our, our review of rezoning right now. So it's a completely separate issue. It's an issue between the applicant and the state, the SHPO, the, the State Historic Preservation Office. As far as our condition, if the condition that you have on the PD ordinance is very limited, just basically ask them to go through the, the state, the city's historic preservation certificate of appropriateness process, just to ensure that there's no issue there. And so our standard, we have a process in our code right now that allows you to go through that process, which either may require them to just get a review and a letter with a condition of approval from our historic preservation officer, which is an administrative process. And I really suspect that the condition of that is going to be, well, if you find anything, make sure you stop work and adjust your plan.
Okay.
But through that application process with the city, if this condition is approved, there's a possibility it may have to go before the Historic Preservation Board, which should be a hearing. And so they may add that particular condition on their certificate appropriateness permit. Otherwise, they may ask for additional evidence to help them make that determination, which could mean a historic preservation or cultural resource report, similar to what the state is asking for. So it, I just want to make clear again, these are two separate processes. What we're requesting is that let's allow the site plan process address the question as to whether they need to get, make any kind of protections on this property because of some historic preservation impacts it might have.
So to clarify for the applicant, are you okay with the conditions then by staff as they are in?
Well, I'm, I don't like the language that it stated in there. I think it's just, it's say just follow city processes, okay? Not specific requirements. That's the only thing that I'm saying. The state's second letter came two, two months later, and it was, said new conditions. Well, obviously Brad had talked to them and said there was a survey. We have the survey that does clearly show two gravestones that are ten inches into the property, no doubt about it. That's why the, the owner, and we do own the property now, took and deeded a twelve-by-fifty strip over to the La Grange Cemetery. Again, probably prematurely, we understand that, but we've done that to be proactive so that we would not run into any issues with that. And we, and clearly, if we run, I mean, most of that area we're talking about is going to be left alone. It's not going to be even touched. So that's something we don't want to get into start digging in an area we're not going to be certain.
Right.
So that's really our concern is that we just want the language to reflect following city processes. Brad's explained it well to me. I understand now that there are two separate processes. I thought we were just looking at the state process. So our bad on that. So I think we are on the same page, and it would be shared at site plan. I just don't want to have anything thrown on top of it that's beyond what a normal process would be.
Okay.
Again, we go through that process. Our Start Preservation Officer, who's our consultant, who's on staff to help us through this process, will determine what's really necessary as evidence to help them make a determination. But at the very minimum, I think they may just make a condition that if you find any evidence, just stop work and make changes.
Brad, can you just remind me what page the conditions are on?
So the condition, the Start Preservation condition on the PD rezoning ordinance is on page three sixty-seven of your packet.
Thank you. That's all I needed. Okay, I'm good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, I see no more questions at this point. Let's call the cards and move forward.
Yes, sir. There's about five.
Hi. I'm Edwina Boyd, and I am at thirteen ninety-five Old Dixie Highway. And actually, we live on the Grange, and I'm glad I wrote this down because my brain's gone to sleep.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you so much for your work. You do a great job. Okay, so my property's on the Grange Road, and I'd like you all to be aware of the drainage issue. I see that they've done a great job of trying to do wonderful things with that property, except for the four stories. But they've forgotten about the neighbors. So we have to deal with this every time there's a heavy rain or a storm. And I'm not a water engineer, so I've bought a picture here just to explain it so I can be a bit more coherent. It's a little much way up, is it? Okay, all right. So we all know what we're talking about. This is Dairy Road up there at the top, and this is US one. So the water runs down US one and, and Dairy Road itself, Dairy Road. And it meets at the Grange and Old Dixie. It just goes all the way down, and we have swales there all the time. Now, the engineers of old have put in ditches on my property, which is the farm right there in the corner. So to try and manage that, to carry the water south to Georgia Avenue, which is down there on that bit. So since Hurricane Matthew, our land has flooded up to four feet deep and pretty much every time there's a storm. And these are facts. And the land is sinking and flooding more every time. So I understand the developers of the Dairy plus one are planning to use existing movement facilities. This is not enough now, and with excess acres, I've seen in excess of eight acres now from today, there's, there's less to percolate. And the neighbors on Old Dixie, La Grange, and even Maryland down there who flood now are going to have to cope with all that flooding. So if you could please help us keep our homes dry, find some way to help us with that. The Kimberley, Kimberley Horn people know about it from this piece here that we've already been talking about. We've had many meetings. I did not know about the February meeting, by the way.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that and understand your concern. Next card?
Kay Saint Ange.
Hello, Ms. Kay.
Hello, Kay Saint Ange, Maryland Avenue. These fifteen wooded acres were described as a quote, "beautiful site, a forest primeval with a richness of growth" by P&amp;Z Commissioner Rogers. This unique forest with its ancient oaks serves as a habitat corridor to Chain of Lakes Park for bobcats, other mammals, and an active bald eagle nest. This development, if approved, would adversely impact wildlife and the nearby lagoon. Ideally, council would table this application for staff to study implementation of the comprehensive plan policies. Quote, "Priorities should be given to the acquisition of those areas known to be important as habitat corridors in the movement of wildlife." So animals are traversing across this property in hopes of getting to Chain of Lakes. Also, the plan says the city shall develop a citywide park to link greenways, trails, and the park system within the city. So that's the ideal condition. But I do find it impressive that if the rezoning is approved, that this developer indicates almost twenty-eight percent of property would be preserved in tree canopy. By preserving this optional canopy percentage, mitigation would be eliminated for the large number of trees removed. This is a densely forested property. This is a densely forested property. So to ensure survival of the trees designated for preservation, great care would be needed to protect the roots of the many large trees to be preserved, as many are sited adjacent to the proposed building's dry retention ponds and pavement. The FDEP indicates when existing trees are retained, protecting the critical roots zone from grade change is essential to avoid killing the trees. Trees struggle to survive if the soils have been excessively compacted by heavy equipment. I, I'm very thankful that Susan Hall and Mr. Marling were willing to interact with me via email about my concerns. A landscape plan provided indicated a sixty-inch DBH heritage oak, number eight fifty-two, which they showed you, was marked to be removed. However, this error is to be corrected, and both heritage trees preserved. Even though the one is in poor condition, they're going to do their best. For the landscape architect, Susan Hall, a two-story building adjacent to tree eight fifty-two is actually to be shifted westward, placing the building beyond the root zone. Limiting the cutting of roots and branches is critical, as is preserving existing grade level and reducing soil compaction. Can I have just another minute?
Uh, yes, I would say yes.
Okay, thank you. Tree preservation areas will need to be permanently protected in county or city records. As this developer is willing to preserve canopy over almost twenty-eight percent of the site, the city might consider amending the code, the tree protection code, to extend canopy requirements to all multifamily developments. I'm putting a bug in your ear. All Titusville residents deserve to receive the many benefits of living among trees, including multifamily residents. I would hope that if approved and, and every effort made to save preserved trees, this project could serve as a model for other multifamily developments to preserve tree canopy areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I agree. Well done. Next card?
Mary Spar.
Okay, I think everybody's got it. Uh, Mary Spar, I live in Cocoa, and I'm going to talk about the trees. Um, I know from personal experience how enjoyable a multifamily development that preserves wooded areas with trails can be, since my parents lived in such a community in Blacksburg, Virginia. Let me say one thing about the handout. We'll get to that in just a sec. If I can just have your attention, um, for, just to focus on the apartment complex in general. The Dairy Road apartment complex also will save many beautiful trees, and much thought by the applicant has been put into what trees can be saved. According to the staff report, twenty-seven point eight percent of the existing canopy will be preserved. By designating at least twenty-five percent of the development area as tree canopy area, the applicant can take advantage of incentive to in the tree ordinance and save a lot of money, plus build a beautiful project on this special heavily wooded area. Most of, or all of you probably know that the applicant is voluntarily planning to set aside tree canopy areas. There is no requirement, none, for tree canopy area preservation in multifamily development. It's all optional, voluntary. And this may be hard to believe, but some of you may recall that back in August and September twenty twenty-one, at the very end of the tree ordinance consideration, a proposed, um, residential tree canopy requirement was split into a single-family twenty-five percent canopy area requirement and multifamily voluntary option of twenty percent. The applicant is planning to use this multifamily voluntary option, but increase it to twenty-five percent, and by doing, doing so, he'll be rewarded, since he will qualify for a very money-saving incentive. As an aside, now, over a year and a half since the tree ordinance passed, I realize how easy it would be for multifamily to comply with a requirement for tree canopy areas. Actually, much, much easier than single-family subdivisions. Now, what worries me is the unlikely event that this applicant is unable to complete the project and another developer ends up building apartments on this incredible property. Would they have to save twenty-five percent tree canopy areas? You can ensure that the vision of the present applicant is preserved legally by adding the sentence to the PD zoning ordinance that Brad went through in detail, and I gave you the section as a handout that a sentence would need to be added to. May I finish?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'm suggesting that you append a sentence to section one point six of this, um, PD zoning ordinance to say that tree canopy areas shall comprise a minimum of twenty-five percent of the development area, which is exactly what more, more, more than the applicant, I mean, the applicant print, plan, plans are presumably more than twenty-five percent. And I haven't run this by Mr. Broome, um, another section may need to be tweaked as well, but I hope you consider just adding at least that little sentence. So in conclusion, I want the incentive-based tree ordinance provisions for multifamily to be used and to get off to a great start, and here's your chance.
Thank you. Next card?
John Rogers.
Took some time, but this is the time.
I, yes. Sorry.
Um, yeah, John Rogers, three, four, one, nine Mogul Avenue, and before you, oh, wait, you started the clock already. I, I just really, really need to stress and emphasize, I am here as a private citizen and a resident, and I'm not here as the newest and most clueless member of the Planning and Zoning Board. Um, and I've actually just heard recently what the fatal flaw is in my argument, so you'll hear it soon. But anyway, I still want to go through with it because I've sat for three hours.
Um, you know, I, we've all agreed that this is a really special piece of property, and
I said so in P and C. Um, if you, if you just walk around it, you know, and on the cemetery side and on the, on the, you know, US one side and on the Dairy roadside, it's just this glorious, I, you know, I rode, I says, I, I ride my bike on that trail all the time. It's darkest, deepest, greenest, shadiest, most heavily wooded property on the bike path between downtown Titusville and a couple of spots, just a couple west of I ninety-five. Um, if you've ever taken that bike path, it's just really, really beautiful. And, um, I actually, I, I went over there and drove into the back of the cemetery and, and kind of looked at it, um, you know, just like, you know, from the back of the cemetery and, you know, walking up to the edge, I spooked a couple of hawks that, you know, looked like the size of Canada geese or something. I think it was a nesting pair. I don't know what the other wildlife is on the property. They always black those things out now, and you can't even see what it says with the, from the survey. But anyway, it's, it's just a really nice piece of property, and I, I certainly want to say to Mr. Marling and the entire team, um, I do think that they're really trying to do the right thing, and they're not only trying to do the right thing, I think they're doing the right thing, um, and certainly above and beyond what other people, um, do. This was the proposal that I had, and I, I see my problem here, um, and it's the height. I didn't realize that we were up against the very limit of the height on this. I, I thought maybe they could go to four floors, and I guess they can't. But, um, and again, I guess I should know I'm on the P and Z, but I'm new. Um, but anyway, wh- what I had suggested was there are seven buildings in the current iteration. I had suggested doing away with the four two-story buildings and going to another three-story building and putting the parking under the buildings. I spoke to, um, the kind of grand old man of the Florida Audubon Society. I have a connection sort of with him, and, um, he said, you know, that's the best way to reduce the parking spaces, and so less asphalt, and so if you reduce that, then you get smaller retention ponds, and then you have more space to put a walking path around the retention pond, which at the moment I think it doesn't have, because there's not quite enough room, because they need the whole retention pond. Um, but anyway, um, I, I guess I was going to suggest that, and I think it's, I'm realizing it's, it's possibly, it's not possible, I suppose, but I thought that that would allow the, the developer to, um, you know, back of the envelope calculation, lose thirty-two units and gain thirty-six and, but anyway, uh, I don't know if under, I don't know if underbuilding parking is possible. May I continue for, I'm pretty close?
I don't, I, I, I'm not the builder, but I wouldn't think that that's possible over there. But, say again?
Is this enough or another minute?
No. Um, and one, another minute?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, so anyway, I just, uh, if that were possible, that would certainly be nice, but I, I have a suspicion it's not possible. Um, but getting, um, to the one other issue, Mr. Fason said that he did not approve of this because he wants more affordable housing. Mr. Marling did say, uh, when I asked him, um, that he would, he actually, they actually may make more money off of three, like five hundred square foot, you know, apartments than one fifteen hundred square foot. So I wonder if it might be possible, uh, to begin moving towards, um, smaller units. We, we currently have a six hundred square foot, uh, limit. Uh, I wonder if you might change that to a four hundred to six hundred square foot unit, even for this particular project, so that people of, you know, lower incomes can move into a nicer development like this is going to be. So I do think that I want to a, a applaud Mr. Marling and his company for, for trying to do the right thing and doing a good job here.
Thank you. Next card?
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty Point Setta Avenue, Titusville, Florida. Uh, this is a quasi judicial, uh, event, and I swear and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, just as I signed on the card. So, uh, I would like, please, that the, uh, clerk, uh, put in ORB eight five oh six, page thirteen seventy-four. That is ORB eight five oh six, page one three seven four. Now, I have nothing in opposition of this project, not at all. Looks like, looks like a good project to me. I think I noticed some things that just happened here just a few minutes ago. There was a Jim, Jimmy McKnight, Susan, and a James Taylor. They used overhead. They used overhead. I don't think you heard me. I want the, the city manager to understand, they, they used overhead. Whereas when I want to show sewage flows, witnessing and so forth, that the city manager lied, he won't let me use the overhead. But I was allowed to use it for the T E C meeting, and I've got videotapes and so forth of that. So, so when I said ORB eighty-five oh six, page thirteen seventy-four, I want you to know that, that I don't have anything against, uh, for example, what, what they presented and what's been said, but the process, the process is, as far as I can see, is polluted, polluted with someone who is, in this case, ORB eight five oh six, page thirteen seventy fifth, thirteen seventy-four, committed serious fraud. So not only have I talked to you about his false reports, but it's fraud he's committed. And that fraud has to do with a report that he's, he said that was done by geosatellite engineers costing seventy thousand dollars.
Stop clock, stop clock, stop clock. We're going to talk about this project. That's what you stood up for? That's what you signed up for?
Yes, sir. That's what I'm setting up to tell the truth.
And I'm not hearing a thing about this project, except you agree with it, and now you're going to go on a rampage.
No, sir.
I'm going to give you an opportunity to talk about this project. If you don't talk about this project, if you don't talk about this agenda item, we're going to be done. Stop clock.
Okay, okay, Mr. Diesel, I want you to understand, I'm talking to you, Mr. Diesel.
I hear you.
Okay, I've got time. I've got time right now. I want you to be truthful.
I want, I want you to talk about this right now, this agenda item.
Okay, I'm under oath. This is a quasi judicial, understand?
And talk about this project.
Do not tell me what the, I'll tell you, do not put words into my mouth. I put words into my mouth, and I'm telling the truth. This is a quasi judicial hearing. I want you to understand that. Do not interrupt me.
It's about this project.
It's about, it's about this process that's going on right now.
And you know it.
And the thing is, is what's going on, I want you to understand, is what's going on is this guy who's, who's, I said, was a, is a liar, cheating, shyster, and a fraudster. Now, listen up, listen up. That makes you guys fruitcakes, fools.
Did you sign up for this project here to talk about this?
I signed, exactly, and that's what I'm signing up. Don't take my time away.
You're not talking about this. No, I'm, I, it's our time.
You're taking my time.
It's my meeting.
It's my time, though.
You're not talking about the agenda item. Your time is up. Have a seat. Thank you.
Okay, you took my time. Okay, that's, it's a quasi judicial.
Have a seat, sir.
That was the wrong thing to do.
Any other cards?
You don't talk about the agenda item, Stan, and you know better. You absolutely know better. Have a seat.
Done. Have a seat. All right. That was fun. Uh, any other cards?
Yes.
I kind of thought that. Uh, I do have a question, uh, for the applicant. Whoever wants to be the applicant in this case, because we're going to talk about the agenda item.
I drew short straw.
There you go. Um, somebody over there mentioned this, uh, and, and I don't think I've heard about it, and maybe you said it. Uh, the movement of wildlife, uh, and I, you guys are doing a great job. I very honestly, I don't know that I've ever seen, uh, a project, contractor, developer, whatever you want to call it, give such an effort, and it really does make me feel like at least the fact that we have a tree ordinance, I'm seeing trees numbered, I'm seeing trees taken care of, um, and then as far as a low-impact development, I feel like if nothing else, we've got it out there on the table and people have the opportunity to do the right thing. That being said, um, I heard of the bald eagle. I, I didn't even know we had those here. Uh, bald eagle, there could even be foxes out there, certainly turtles are a big deal to me. How would you do that?
Well, I, I don't know the city's process exactly, but I do know when it comes to things like gopher tortoises, I've dealt with those significantly. You have to survey for that. Um, if there is indeed a bald eagle nest there, okay, that's a whole, that used to, I don't know if it still is, but there used to be seven hundred foot requirement on that as a, a radius around it, that you, you couldn't, I had a project in Rockledge, I remember, told them they couldn't build because they had a bald eagle nest right in the middle of their property. Eventually, the bald eagle moved on, but for the time being, he couldn't. So we will have to address those, and again, Brad may want to say what is required from the process of, you know, any wildlife surveys or anything like that.
They provide that during the site plan process, so that's all discovered during that time.
Okay. Okay, just, I just want to make sure, because you did such a great job talking about the trees and the vegetation and all that, and the, the percentage of saved trees, and I just want to make sure that we have that wildlife out there.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Um, council questions, comments? Uh, are we ready to move forward, city attorney?
Well, there'd be an opportunity for rebuttal by the applicant at this point.
Right. I don't think, kind of did that. Applicant, anybody? Any applicant? Want to just follow up with anything you want to say?
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe we have anything else. The only thing we were requesting was that the historical preservation section just reflect that we will be required to cover, uh, be governed by city code, okay, on that. It seemed to be a little more in-depth.
And I did want to address that, too, uh, and I, I think that's going down the road or whatever, but I've heard him say that several times concerning the wording, that they want to, uh, uh, follow city code.
Yes.
As opposed to what? As what's it say?
Well, it has some specifics. It's about a cultural dig, doesn't it have that actually in there?
I'll read it for the record here. A certificate to dig shall be required with the approval of a site development permit consistent with a certificate of appropriateness procedures described in chapter twenty-nine, Article six, Historic Preservation, Section twenty-nine dash one nineteen of the Land of them Regulations. So it's just asking for that they get a certificate appropriateness through a process. What that might entail, we won't know until they go through that process.
Okay, I think that we put that out there, and you guys stay on top of that, but it sounds like we still have some time to figure that part out.
We're comfortable, and we know the steps we've already taken, okay, to dedicate that section of property, so we're, we're pretty confident in that.
It appears that way, from what I've seen.
We also actually have the plot map, if you'd like one.
I'm good. Okay, um.
You want to stab?
Remember Nelson?
You want to stab at this?
Tell me, yeah.
Oh, I have a question.
Yes, I remember Stokoe, that'll see you, yes.
No, just a clarifying question because a citizen brought it up. Brad, with this, um, if we go through with the change of land use and the rezoning, I think with PD, you said it does require a master plan. So if the property were to be with PD, you said it does require a master plan, so if the property were to be resold, and what happens as far as we approve the master plan that's with this, what does that process look like?
So this, if this annexation, land use, and rezoning is approved, that rezoning with master plan governs that property, so any development that comes forward has to be consistent with that master plan.
Okay.
So if it's sold to someone else, many years later, that's, that still governs.
That master plan stays with it.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, I think we're good.
Uh, City Manager, we need to make a motion to go past ten-thirty.
Oh, gosh, it just snuck up on us, didn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it really did, so I need a motion, and I'd say go to eleven o'clock, at least. I'm not saying we will, but why not?
Move to extend the meeting till eleven PM.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? All right, to eleven o'clock, all right. Where were we? Okay. Okay, Member Nelson.
And I just want to remind counsel, we're going to do this in three stages. The first thing you need to address is the annexation, next would be the land use, and third would be the rezoning.
Move to approve the annexation of three-point-five-four acre parcel having Brevard County Property Appraiser, parcel number twenty-one thirty-five twenty-nine zero-zero-eight, finding that the annexation is consistent with the city's comp plan and chapter one-seventy-one for its intentions. Was that good?
That sounded good to me.
Second.
I just want to make sure I heard the ordinance number in there, I, that's the ordinance number twenty-four twenty-two twenty-three.
I didn't say the ordinance.
You didn't?
Oh, way to go.
With the ordinance.
I thought you did.
I wouldn't think so on the annexation.
We can't hear what he's saying.
I think when we get down to the land.
Hey Joe, could you put your microphone on?
We can't hear what you're saying.
He's wondering where the conditions go.
Yeah, is there any conditions on any, on this one that staff wanted, that we wanted included?
Not on the annexation.
Yeah, right now, it says the annexation, there are no conditions associated with the annexation ordinance.
That was, that was my question.
Okay, she's ready. I think.
Second.
Good. Okay, we got that all in there now?
Correct, just to clarify, there was a motion to approve the annexation ordinance number twenty-four twenty-two twenty-three, and you have a second.
And, okay, so I've got a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Cole, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Next move.
Okay, move to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-two twenty-three, amend the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty dash nineteen-eighty-eight, which adopted the comp plan of the city of Titusville by amending the future land use designation for fifteen-point acres from neighborhood commercial, then commercial low intensity future use, land use designation to medium density residential future land use.
That sounded great.
Second.
Member Nelson with the motion, Member Cole with the second, roll call vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes. Passes unanimously, next step. On the third one.
Oh, sorry. Move to approve ordinance number twenty-six dash twenty-two twenty-three, by amending the zoning map made part of that ordinance by changing the zoning classification from agricultural, residential, and community commercial to planned development with the conditions as outlined by Mr. Parrish.
City Attorney?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like you to do is clarify that you're finding that it does meet the comprehensive plan and the rezoning criteria within the code.
Sorry about that. And I would like to put as one of the conditions, not because I don't trust you, but if anything happens, I don't trust necessarily the next person, twenty-five percent tree canopy.
They're going for twenty-eight.
I know, and actually, I think they're entitled to some money for that, actually.
I want to clarify that the applicant had testified or stated that you were going to preserve how much canopy, are you, so are you okay with that condition as being with what you've represented?
We are.
And again, if you could make part of your motion to include your finding that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the approval criteria in section thirty-four-forty of the LDRs.
Based on the evidence.
Sorry, your part?
Based on the evidence presented, I find, we find that the request is consistent with the comp plan and the approval criteria set out in section thirty-four dash forty of Land Development Regulations.
I've got a motion.
Second.
Motion's acceptable. City Attorney?
Yes, sir, is that, Brad, does that cover their conditions?
So this twenty-five percent canopy condition will be added to the PD ordinance, any particular location, or just we'll, staff will locate that as an extra add-on, okay?
You might want to, probably don't need to, but you might want to add the word minimal twenty-five percent.
Minimal.
Minimal twenty-five percent. Again, I feel pretty good about the fact they're going for twenty-eight, so, but that being said, have a motion from Member Nelson, a second from-
I accept the-
You got to hold it, go. And Member Cole has the second, roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yeah.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Well done, well presented. And with that, five-minute recess. Where was I? Let's see.
Pre-vo.
I think, I think we're on? Okay, we're on. Meeting back in order after recess? All right, with that, I'm just going to do the best thing I can do here. City Manager?
Onto new business, which is item twelve-A transitional housing, and what we'd like counsel to do is consider staff's research and alternates into the city zoning regulations relating to transitional housing, including homeless, domestic violence, emergency and protective shelters. At counsel's direction, staff may propose amendments to the city zoning, and Mr. Parrish is here with a presentation on this.
All right, before you even start that presentation, just so I'm clear, we as a council are simply going to give input?
We're asking for direction this evening.
So does that directing come across as, yeah, I get what you're saying, or does that come across as we need a vote?
We'll need a vote, I would request a vote or direction collectively from the council as to what you would like us to do. So I put in the, on page five-eight-eight of your packet, you'll see some alternatives as three. One is based on research that was included in your packet about this issue, and your input, and I've put it together as conditions of a new use that would be allowed in the urban mixed-use zoning district.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed. You're up.
Well, that's it, so that, those are the conditions. I was jumping ahead, sir.
All in favor? All right.
The other, when you see the conditions on there, the other option is to approve it as a conditional use permit, and the other option is to make no changes at all and not propose any ordinance.
Vice Mayor, I'm glad you've got a button push.
Yes, Brad, that, I know that this, the, what is it, twelve-A, item A, I think that's the one we're on. It is, it is going to, it's a hard one, because it is still some things like, yes, if, if certain conditions are met, we can't, the state requirement of fire codes, fire, you know, like equipment, is still going to have to be in, in position in anything that we do, and I know that there's a difference between a six-bed unit versus anything above that, those things needs to stay in place. I, I am wondering, is, is, can we get to a point that we set some standards of condition that may limit or help the cost of fire repression equipment that goes into a unit?
At the speaking with the fire marshal this morning, there's very limited, limita, very limited things that we can offer, so, once, you know, a nonprofit use counseling, whatever that might be, is permitted, however, if you add residential component to it, such as a dormitory use, however that, you know, the fire marshal's going to have to make a classification of how that, what that residential- however that, you know, the fire marshal's gonna have to make a classification of how that, what that residential use is. And their call almost ninety percent of the time is that it, there's gonna be a fire suppression system. I think one of the only outs that we really found was if you get licensed based on the statute as a, as a recovery home or some kind of use there that's allowed in the statute. And then it says that with this licensing, then you are exempt from this fire protection requirement. But that requires some kind of licensing. So a lot of these transitional homes or these transitionals, or these homeless shelters are not gonna have licensing involved in it. Not necessarily required. You're just providing a housing space. You're providing bedrooms. You're providing, a group home is an example. But trend, what we're trying to suggest here is that this is not specifically a permanent-type housing situation. This is a trans, more limited housing, temporary housing situation. So based on the research that I found, which I've attached here, several definitions I found from American Planning Association publications about all kinds of jurisdictions around the country, and then some excerpts from other jurisdictions nearby. I believe what we're looking at is a transitional-type housing that's more like a domestic violence shelter. We currently allow, and specifically state in our downtown code, or a homeless shelter, or an emergency shelter, generally for the purposes of providing temporary housing for those who are in need. So even under that situation, the fire department is gonna require a fire suppression system. We just couldn't get around that.
And, and that's only, when you've got six beds, that's only related when, that's only implemented or required when the, the six beds are occupied by, by non-family members. Is that correct?
Correct. Fire department had, you know, they're gonna, they have certain standards they have to abide by that are outside of zoning. They have to adhere to. So when they see what's being proposed under our zoning, they try to fix that into their classifications. And what I've heard, listened to the conversations with the fire marshal is that you would look at this as a dormitory, if you will. You know, and so that, that's gonna require some kind of fire suppression system because you have three or more unrelated people living in the same housing structure.
What about the, and I see that you put it on here, and I noted that on my note, the hundred and sixty, hundred and eighty day requirement, Brian? Can, can we, can that be extended? Or can we get around that? Or can we find it? Because that puts us in a lot of trouble when the people who want to do this type of work, when they have that hundred and eighty day requirement. And then, oh, Cain breaks Luke, so to speak, of try to change in residency at that particular point.
You can. You can not include this. If you decide to go forward with my option one, you not necessarily have to include that second bullet. Then, then becomes more of a...
And you may get in trouble by not including it, as well. And have to go through all of the eviction. If we can't do anything to extend it and have the surety of the law protecting it.
Right. So this is, you know, domestic shelter or a homeless shelter be treated separately than a, a group home, for example, that has more permanent housing, permanent living standards? So if an eviction needs to happen, that'll have to go under a different process than you would at a homeless shelter, for example. But even at a homeless shelter, you use providing housing for someone there, and they're there for a long time or a certain amount of time. You know, they might have rights. So then they have to go through the formal eviction process in that situation potentially.
That's all I, you know, everything else is, you know, that, it's trying to minimum. But the, the two biggest concerns for me is that, again, the fire retardant and the cost of that. And there is no funding specifically that you can get to say, okay, I'll do this activity, but my greatest cost is gonna be put in a fire suppress, uh...
Well, Mr. Officer, just so I answer, I wanna follow up on what you're saying because there are, that rule is, from what I understand, is fairly new. It was put in place several years ago. There are many other examples that were brought up to me at previous meetings about other projects. And we looked into some of them, and every one of them's different. So for example, you have a multifamily development apartment complex, and it's now being used for some kind of recovery house. It's still really a, a living situation of residential in a multifamily setting. So there's really nothing that needed to do to improve the site. So you have examples like that. I think sometimes when you have a project that has a proposal to convert a building that is currently commercial as occupants, for occupancy purposes, per the Florida Building Code, and now they wanna put a residential component or convert it to a residential use, that's a change of occupancy that's gonna trigger some of these new requirements. So there are situations where you'll have a use that's being from one residential type to another residential type, and so they're still grandfathered under some circumstances for fire suppression systems, for example. They might not have to put in a fire suppression system. But a, a black and white change of use from a commercial to a residential certainly trigger those new requirements.
Okay, I would, for, with my little knowledge of this, I would give, we don't vote on it or anything, but my suggestion was just, kind of, go for what you have here and, because it's gonna have to probably remain at this time pretty liquid because we may have to come back because of all of the changes that, that are going on in the affordable housing arena.
Absolutely.
A lot of that, it's gonna fall in the, in the space of emergency housing, like housing for the homeless and so forth.
Just to clarify, if we're talking about the Live Local Act, that's for big projects. That's for things that are much, many units within a development. So something this small, I don't think was really, from what I understood.
Alright, but that being said, you're saying no changes?
I'm saying no changes for this.
Ultimately, we will vote on this. So that's, that's where you're going. City, uh, Member Stokoe?
Yep, um, that was kind of, Vice Mayor alluded to a little bit of what I was kinda curious about. So I'm happy to know that, okay, you're saying no changes. It looked to me from reading this that you, the intent behind this was, we, right now, we allow transitional housing in DMU, and we were looking to expand it into UMU. If we did expand it, this criteria that you have listed here, is that the same criteria that we currently have for DMU?
No.
Okay. Can you just briefly explain why the criteria did not stay the same?
So downtown mixed-use zoning districts are a little different. I, I didn't see that the criteria is really applicable or consistent with what the input I received from the council in previous meetings and from what I saw in other research. So these are just a proposal. The one thousand feet distance requirement is to kinda make sure they're not, you don't have too many of these types of uses, buildings taking over a neighborhood. And that's consistent with even from the statute as far as group homes, community residential homes, is what they classify as. Owned and maintained by not-for-profit. I found that from, from Orlando or Melbourne, one of those jurisdictions. Meets all requirements of Florida Building Code, that's just either reading the obvious. And the six beds, that's just because, it's just consistent with the community residential home criteria as well on the statute, which allows someone to develop, set up a group home inside a single-family home, inside a single-family neighborhood. And it has to be considered as a single-family unit. So we thought that might, that's a, that's similar to the same standard for that type of use. And the hundred and eighty days was just based on discussion from previous meetings.
Okay. Um, I'm open to, like, leaving this on the bookshelf, so to speak, but I'd probably lean more towards the no changes just at this time. But I'm glad, I feel like this is proactive. Should this, like, should we see a need coming and as we know a little bit more?
Just so you know, you do have someone in the audience that may wanna speak on this item.
Okay, um, actually, I don't have any lights lit. So call card?
Yes, two cards. The first, Deborah Chambers.
You're important. This is where they go. More and more.
Deborah Chambers, Esther's Place Inc., reside at 2748 Nottingham Court in Titusville. We have been working with Esther's Place for three years now. We have ministered to two hundred and sixty-four women, and we've just had two more die on the street. So we've lost six, thirteen ladies that we've been ministering to in that time. Because it's hard to get through the night and live. And so that, that's the heartbreaking thing. I've been, you need to pay Brad double of whatever you pay him.
City Manager, you get that?
At least, at least double. We have gone round and round and round and round. And I've been with the planning people over there, and they wanna put me in statute four nineteen. I don't belong there. That is for programs for disabled people, people who have autism and different mobility limitations, for senior citizens with dementia and those type of things. I've called every agency in the state who governs them, they won't come near us. We fall under the Florida Board of Professional Regulations and the Florida Certification Board. We would be considered a sober house under their statutes, okay? This is all new to everybody. So this is what Christ Central does at Liberty Lodge, and what The Grove is doing now over there at, I walk about ministry, okay? None of them have licenses of any kind. Because we fall under the sober house, and this is the Florida Certification Board. It says, um, "Do folks who operate or own a sober house have to have any training or certification?" The answer is no. "Do folks who operate a sober house have to have any background checks?" The answer is no. "Do folks who operate and own a sober house have any licensing registration requirements?" No. "Are folks who own and operate a sober house accountable to regulatory agencies?" No. We do have to come under this, the, the ordinances of the city, which we don't have a problem with. Our problem with the fire safety thing is, we're under two thousand square feet. We have eleven exits, and it took less than thirty seconds for us all to get out. We, um, called the National Fire Prevention Association, and they took us to chapter thirteen.
Hold that thought. I need an extension, first of all. We're at eleven o'clock.
It's eleven thirty?
To eleven thirty. Okay, I have a motion for eleven thirty. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. We'll extend to eleven thirty. And do you need another, wait, we gotta extend your time too, because you've gone to your three minutes. Do you want two more minutes? Can you do it?
I can sure try.
Yeah, let's try, because we're, yeah, I think we hit where you're coming from. So let's go two more minutes.
Okay, so the, um, the National Fire Prevention Association gave us chapter thirteen, point three, point two, point two, one, point two, point two. In conversion, sprinkler systems may not be required in small board or care homes. Now, we had a big discussion about small board and care homes, or small board is care homes, anyway, of serving eight or fewer residents, and the occupants in the building can, can get out of the building in less than three minutes. We're under two thousand square feet. We have eleven exits, and it took us thirty seconds to get out. Okay? So, and the other thing with the fire suppression system is we couldn't find a company who would come and do it for under fifty thousand dollars. We are under two thousand square feet. We have eleven exits. We have fire alarms. We have, um, smoke sensors, heat sensors, and fire extinguishers. To put in a fire suppression system in this small little building is like overkill. Plus, we couldn't find anybody who would do it. They wouldn't put a commercial building in a, a commercial fire suppression system in a residential building. Now, we're talking with the fire marshal and Brad today. There is a company who is doing some of that in town. I haven't been able to connect with them yet, but we are going to research that further. The other issues on here, the six beds, we're okay with that. That's all we can do. That's all we have the square footage for. A hundred and eighty days? Well, we're kinda iffy with that. How written in stone is it? You know, if I have a girl who's going to college and she's only halfway through, can I extend her stay?
Okay, I, I think we have the point you're making. We may call you back up. So go ahead and, see, Brad, is there anything you wanna comment on that, or?
We did have a discussion with Ms. Chambers, Paul Anderson, with the fire department, and my, and we, we sat down with Ms. Chambers at length. And I've called Ms. Chambers several times in the past few weeks, just to kinda understand better what she's trying to do. We just can't seem to get around the fire suppression requirement. And even, I think, even the sober house, what Ms. Chambers brought up, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's chapter three ninety-seven, point forty-seven. It's called voluntary certification of recovery residences. We had discussion about that as well. And I think that's what, that's what I was referring to earlier. Paul was reviewing that, saying that you still need some kind of licenses to be able to qualify for this, or someone does. And then that allows you some exemption. But Ms. Chambers has told us, she, what she's trying to do is not have a license. She doesn't wanna fall under any kind of category. What she's trying to do is some ministerial work. But, and, and that's not the issue. It's the fact that we're gonna have a housing component in the building. That's what's causing or requiring this fire suppression system, and that's where, where we're hung up on. And if it's gonna be temporary housing, that's why we're here tonight to see if we can clarify the zoning to make sure that what she's trying to do is consistent. Because all the other uses that we identified, I'm sorry, that are in our code, we just could not find, we couldn't find her to be consistent with what we can see in the city's code right now, and with the fire suppression issue.
Alright, uh, Member Stokoe?
Is, um, her property located in the UMU district? Okay, and it, I feel like even if we did approve this, we would still have issues with the fire. Okay.
Uh, next card, please.
Stan Johnston.
I almost passed on this.
I know you did, but this is kind of an important one, so I get it.
I almost passed. It just seems like she's, Mrs. Chambers, and, and what she's doing is the right thing, and, and you're giving her too much trouble. So I'd like y'all to, to bear in mind with what she's doing and not try to make stumbling blocks for her. Thank you.
I have to at least comment, stumbling blocks are all about making sure nobody gets, I don't want you so hurt, but make sure no one gets killed in, in a fire. And I think there's even a liability there all the way around. Any other cards? So, explain to me, if we went with no change, I'm like, I got fingered there. Yeah, no changes. What would that look like?
So the options we brought up to Ms. Chambers was to do a group home. She's told us that's not what she's doing. Our code says group home has to be licensed under chapter four nineteen, which is a community residential home. Basically allows several people who are unrelated by, by blood to live in a single-family home, in a group home setting, but it has to be considered as a single-family home by statute. So it preempts us from denying something like that in a single-family home. However, it does require a license from ACHA, which is the Agency for Healthcare Administration. Ms. Chambers has told us she's not doing that. Because even in that situation, though, the fire department would say that you have to have some kind of fire suppression system in that case because of their classification that, or their definitions of the number of people that are living together as a housekeeping unit, who are unrelated by blood. And so that would mean it would fall under some kind of residential use that would require this fire suppression system. So even in that case, we don't make any action here. She still has to deal with that fire suppression system. Another option is to turn it into a multifamily use, multifamily development. Maybe have, so this building would be divided into, you know, individual residential units or duplex, which this zoning district allows multifamily development. But that would require a fire suppression system as well. So I, we're just trying to see what the avenues are for her to be able to turn this into, not require a fire suppression system. Honestly, it sounds like maybe taking something that is already residential. And if it's already being occupied as residential, continuing as residential and, and allowing her services to operate in that type of setting. What Ms. Chambers is proposing is, is what she has is a commercial building, and changing the occupancy, and according to Florida Building Code, has, everything has to be brought up code, and that triggers the fire suppression system as well.
Any other council comments or questions?
One other thing, we did mention, what I heard this morning was that if she has a number of residential or bedrooms, or she... a number of residential bedrooms, or she has an occupancy that allows, brings it down to maybe two bedrooms, that she wouldn't fall under, she'd fall underneath that threshold for having a fire suppression system.
Oh, there you go.
And that's what I was, it's about, she's got to be concerned about the egress system. She says she, they exited the house in 30 seconds. And 30 seconds in a fire is a lifetime. And that's what you have to be concerned. If you could take a unit and add, you know, a couple toilets and put an egress on door on each bedroom, then you could begin to change things and have different requirements.
All right, so I see no other names. I guess what? I'm looking for a win-win. I don't know if I can get it. I obviously feel like the fire safety is extremely important. She notes that she talked to somebody, and it's $50,000, which pretty much would probably shut them down. That's, what's 50,000? And that what you said, come on up?
It was 50,000. The problem was, we couldn't find anybody who would put it in our building.
Well, if you found somebody, you have 50,000 dollars.
That we're trying to put a commercial fire system in a residential building, and they wouldn't do it because we didn't even meet the minimum foot square footage for them to do it under their codes. And they're telling us we don't meet the code to have it put in because none of our people are disabled. To go with the the Florida Health and Safety Board, they don't have anything to do with us. They don't inspect us. DCF doesn't have anything to do with us. We don't have children. We're not doing medications of any kind. We're just trying to help these people that are stuck on the street.
Absolutely. And obviously, we want to find a way to do that, and we want to find a way to do that safely. Hold up a minute here. We got it. So, don't leave, because he may call you. But Brad, if you were, and I hate to do it like this, but it's about where I'm at. You've researched this a lot more than I have. Which is the most practical? Which is the choice that you think? This is the one that makes sense to me?
Well, we suggested maybe reducing the occupancy, residential living occupancy of the building. So, maybe revising her building permit that we have in review right now. We've had it, we're holding on to it, to maybe reduce the number of bedrooms to start with and then see how that works out. But that, you know, what we've discussed was, we're going to review it based on occupancy, not based on how many beds she thinks she's going to have in there. So, the way it looks at, you look at a building, you got a bedroom, and it's got a number of square feet in there. Florida Building Code is going to tell us what that potential occupancy is. That's how we're going to evaluate it, not how many beds are actually in there. So, we can work with her on that. But then, that means she'll have to agree to revise her building permit. We can certainly speak with her again and meet with her about that again.
That would be, you need to do your part.
They offered several different things. We have our nonprofit in our 501(c)(3) that states specifically what we're doing. So, if we change what we're doing, then we're going to have to go back and change some of that.
Well, changing some of that allows you to keep doing what you're doing. That may be what you have to do. I mean, because you want to keep doing what you're doing. We want to see you keep doing what you're doing. Brad's trying to come up with a way that you can keep doing what you're doing. You're just going to have to maybe do a little bit of something and go back and get with Brad and make it work. And as far as I'm concerned, that's my input. You had a great idea. You want to keep going. He's given you a way to keep going. You're just going to have to go do a little bit with him. Am I there?
We're always willing to meet with Ms. Chambers and talk further about this. And I think we even agreed at the end of the meeting this morning that we would continue the discussion about it.
And not this discussion, but you had the thought about making, not making, but having her reduce bedrooms? Is that what you said?
Yes.
And I would say that would be my recommendation. I don't know that that's part of it, if that's part of do what we're doing. But what you just said there sounded like a plan. If she can get with you, it sounds like she can stay open, help the people she's helping, and you can make it work.
Right. The use that's going on there, or the ministerial services that's happening in the property, that's not an issue. It's the housing. So, the operation of what's going on in the building is not an issue with us.
I vote for that.
Is your, is your, your house is the one right on the side of the tracks on Main Street?
No, we are on Main Street in DeLeon.
Main Street in DeLeon?
Yellow, hazy house on that big block.
If I'm, if I'm, if I'm going west is on the left?
AA building, yeah.
If I'm going west is on the left hand side? On the right side?
The north right. If you're going down Main Street and you cross DeLeon, where that property right on your right.
With the handicap ladder that's?
Yes, we get the long rail.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can we move in that direction?
Yes. We, your option here is to no, no change. We'll continue working with it.
Continue to work and let her to continue to do what she's doing and do what you need to do as far as saying, we need to reduce this, whatever it is to keep the people safe, while she can still help them.
Yeah. If we have to reduce the number of people we can house in the place, then we might as well not do it. It's not going to be worth the effort.
Well, it would be to the ones you're helping. It would be to the ones you're helping. I mean, it's kind of like the old starfish story. They helped that one.
When you have 20 people coming in, which two are you going to pick?
I'm just going to tell you, the ones that are there, you're going to help. And I just can't, just talking to you, I just can't imagine you saying I'm not going to help.
And we have three that are clean and employed right now.
Well, I'm going to tell you, that's the best we got right now. I say keep it as it is. Do we need to take a vote on that? Do we need a motion on that? Somebody make a motion that we keep it as it is and let them work that out. No changes, I think is the word. But it really is changes, because you're going to talk about it, make it work.
Well, if you go that route, if that's your motion or director's?
I think that's fine. I just think there's some more discussion between you two to make it work before we vote something that doesn't make it work.
Because even if we change right now, this isn't going to help the situation. That's the, that's the issue I have.
I'm not quite sure why we're making a motion.
Well, I said, no, it started.
Yeah. We're not doing anything.
Yeah.
It's almost sending you back to say, work this out. We want her to stay open and continue to help people, and we want to make sure we're doing the right thing, not only for the safety, but the liability for the city.
So, this item, then, we'll take that, it sounds like I see a consensus here, so we won't bring this back before you again, what you see here.
Right. We have to, if I may, you have to be very careful, because if we say the wrong thing and something happens at her place between now and then, we may be, we may find ourselves in a very bad situation. So, the proposal is that the transitional housing instructions that you have given us is, I would suggest that they stay in alignment with what you have. And as far as what you are working out, we have nothing to say about that.
Keep working on it.
Thank you.
We, I don't think we need a motion. All right, we're very good. Thank you. City Manager.
Onto Item 12B, which is a contract award using ARPA funds for FY23 slip lining and manhole lift station rehabilitation. On 26 July 2022, City Council approved the use of America Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, investment in the amount of $1,926,596 for the Osprey INI Elimination Project. On 14 March 2023, City Council approved the reallocation of ARPA funds in the amount of $300,000 from the Indian River Force Main Project to the Osprey INI Elimination Project. On 9 March 2023, the city solicited bids and received 42 vendors out of the 669 notified obtained bids. Staff is reviewed and recommends the approval of the contract to Instaform Technologies LLC of Chesterfield, Missouri, for the installation of slip lining and the construction of manhole lift station rehabilitations within the two basins of the Osprey Water Reclamation Facility service area in the amount of $2,105,234.74. Additionally authorized the mayor to execute the contract upon review by city staff.
And that's ARPA funds?
That's correct.
I always like to hear that. Thank you, sir. Counsel? Cards?
Yes, sir, one card, Stan Johnston.
Good evening, Stan Johnston. I've worked with this kind of stuff before. In this case, is the stuff that I don't like to work with is that in our Water Resources Department, we have problems, and I don't go into it a whole lot, but gag orders and so forth. So, with the, with the situation of our, our management at the high levels is that I don't think that we should continue proceeding with business as it is. We should get, we should fire it. That's all.
Any other cards? All right, I'm willing to entertain a motion or discussion. Go ahead, Member Nelson.
Move to approve the award of contract to Instaform Technologies for the installation of slip lining and the construction of manhole lift station rehabilitations within the two basins of the Osprey Water Reclamation Facility.
You have earned your keep tonight, Member Nelson.
That's why I like second.
Member Nelson makes a motion. I'd like to give that second to somebody else. He keeps stealing them. Member Cole has the second. Roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
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 Passage unanimously, City Manager.
Onto Item 12C, which is the North Brevard Economic Development Zone budget annual expenditure of city funds by the zone. The interlocal agreement between the City of Titusville and the North Brevard Economic Development Zone requires that the city review and approve the district's budget concerning the expenditures of city funds. Mr. Post is here to answer any questions, and staff recommends that you review and approve the FY2023-24 North Brevard Economic Development Zone budget annual expenditures of the city funds as contained within the annual budget of the zone.
Mr. Post, thank you for being here at this late hour.
Oh, yeah.
Always is. Good evening. I guess I can still say that. So, I'll be real quick. The Economic Development Zone, I'm, of course, the executive director for that body. We have a nine-person volunteer board that meets once a month. I know the mayor attends on behalf of the council. Appreciate his support. They've been around since 2011, and in 2011, there was an interlocal agreement that was executed because it's a very special organization, the Economic Development Zone. It's established under Florida law as a special district, and it involves not only the jurisdiction of Titusville, but also the Brevard County. So, the county commission and the city council both had to enter into an interlocal. And part of that interlocal agreement mandated that the board would, or the zone would, on an annual basis, present its summary of activities of what it had worked on and also the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. So, our coming tonight is ready to get approval for that. Just a couple of quick comments about it, and then I'll, let's see if you have any questions. You know, one of the things that's kind of unique about our organization, too, is because we use a tax increment financing mechanism to have our revenue generated, we don't really know what the final revenue numbers will be until late July or early August, until the property appraiser's office sets the valuation. But we do sometimes make very close approximations. Scott was able to provide to us some preliminary worksheets from the tax assessor's, the tax appraiser's office. So, it does look like the revenue next year will be slightly larger than anticipated. And what we'll do, we'll keep those same accounts that are listed there on the budgets that you see. We'll keep those same dollar amounts the same. We'll probably put that excess revenue into the reserve account until we come up with the correct budgeted account to spend that money. The second thing is, back in 2012, there was actually an economic development plan that was crafted per mandate from the council and the county commission. They wanted to see specific programs that the zone would do. So, earlier this spring, we had the chance to get the board together and do kind of a strategic planning session, just to see if there were any changes that were necessary. The result of that was to keep everything as is, but there is an acknowledgement that in addition to our focus to try to create jobs in the area and also try to increase capital investment in the area, to also look at what we can do to help with infrastructure capacity, because all the progress that we've had over the last few years has put more strain on utilities, more strain on certainly workforce housing and those kind of things. So, we'll be looking at projects that we could help in that regard as well. So, I'll stop and see if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? I would simply say it's been, it's my honor to be there as the Titusville representative. I learned a lot. I've learned a lot. And one of the things I've learned is just how much they do and how much their hand is out there. I think the word recruiting works, but getting businesses in here, assisting businesses come in here. And Troy, you do a great job of leading it with a calm and steady hand and solid personality, positive personality, take, you know, new ideas. Certainly, there's disagreement, but I like to say every time I talk about the zone, that the thing I hear at least every single meeting I'm in, somewhere along the line of discussion, somebody's going to say, is it good for Titusville? Is this good for Titusville? And I love it when I hear that. And then the discussion, you know, goes further, and obviously, if there's questions about if it's good for, not good for Titusville, then they back up. So, I, again, I'm very pleased with the zone. I didn't know much about the zone at all until I became a council member and then became the mayor and got to go see it. And when you see it in action, it's like, wow. They just, and if you get a whole list of things happened that long before I got there, meaning back when you started, there's quite a list of restaurants and businesses that have been assisted or were helped to move here. And I won't go into any details, because I'll probably mess them up, but I will just tell you that it's a very active board that makes a lot of things happen, and I'm very, very pleased that they do what they do.
And if I could add, I appreciate that. We have a great board, and many of those are individuals that the council has appointed, but also work very closely with Scott's office and the city's Economic Development Department, along with the EDC for the county. So, it's a good team, and I really appreciate all that they've done, too.
Yeah, and it should probably be known that every meeting, there's a segment on the agenda for the Titusville report, whatever that may be, depending what's going on. Was it Nichols or Nicholas?
Yeah. Nicholas Gallow.
She was the main presenter for a while, and now City Manager is the main presenter, and then certainly I pipe up where need be. We had a little need be pipe up recently. But that being said, very pleased with it. So, if there's no questions, we'll let you sit down. We'll take any cards we may have, and we'll go from there. Thank you so much, Troy. Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Got one. Thank you very much. With that, any questions, comments, or in motion?
Upper the fiscal year 2023, 2024, NESP's annual expenditure of city funds is contained within the annual budget for North Brevard Economic Development.
Second.
I have a, I have a motion by Member Nelson. I have a second by Member Stokel. Roll call, vote.
I apologize profusely. I was looking down to the citizen wave the right.
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. He did the right thing for us at 11:28. We got two more minutes.
Yep. Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passage unanimously. Troy, thank you, and the entire board. You guys are impressive. Now, run home and get in bed. I see it coming. Get in the cereal. City Manager.
Petitions and requests of public present on agenda items?
I see nothing.
Onto mayor and council reports.
I'm going to be real quick, because we've got two minutes. Tomorrow, I will be at the Knights of Columbus, but it's the Yalz Club for Flag Day. So, I did want to say whether I'm there or not, I wanted to say tomorrow's Flag Day, and I think it's a very important day for what the flag represents and who has defended that flag over the many, many years, and certainly thank our members from the military. Gosh, we got a lot of y'all. Vice Mayor, Member Cole, City Manager. I don't think any of them, right there? Congratulations. Thank you, guys, and again, enjoy, enjoy Flag. Good job, man. Oh, man, we're surrounded. So, thank you all, and again, Flag Day, enjoy it. We'll go this way. You got a minute and a half?
Oh, just, I haven't been doing anything. I just pop up here and pop up there.
We hang out together, something like that. And then I do want to say that Member Stokel sits at the VIP seat at dinner yesterday, and Vice Mayor and I, we sit in the very back seat, and just so you know, our table was the very last table to go. And I went by, and Member Stokel was done eating, and I said, you having fun up here? She says, who are you?